Yeah.
Okay.
I call, call to order the July twenty-third Planning Commission regular meeting. May I have a roll call, please?
Michael here.
Lynn here.
Jeff here.
Eric here.
All rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First, we have the approval of the regular agenda. Are there anything to add or subtract, Madison? May I have the motion, please?
I make the motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Of July twenty-third?
Of July twenty-third.
Twenty-twenty-five.
Twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next are the minutes. Has everybody read them?
Yes.
Now, we stopped at our one, but I don't feel we got all the minutes for that in there, but we're gonna be going through that again, so. May I have the motion, please?
I have a motion to approve the official minutes Wednesday, July ninth, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Does anybody have a declaration of conflicts of interest?
No.
No?
No.
No? Eric?
No.
Public comment. Is there anybody in the audience this evening? Excuse me, I don't know what's with my voice tonight. That is not on tonight's agenda, since you're the couple. Do you have anything? No? No?
No one online.
No one online.
No one online. No special presentations, so we go to design review, land use bearings. Zero zero one eight Silver Star Trail, new single-family residence.
So, this is one of the deed restricted properties at the south end of the property. It's a, uh, south end of the project. It's a four-bedroom, four thousand one hundred and thirty-square-foot, single-family home. The midpoint roof height is twenty-seven feet, four and a half inches, which is under the twenty-eight-foot height limit. Parking is more than adequate with four off-street spaces. Uh, two is the one, uh, the amount required for those deed-restricted lots. All setbacks are respected in the proposals under the allowable lot and impervious coverage limitations. They have more snow storage than is required by the code at two hundred and seventy-three square feet, so staff is recommending approval.
Eric, do you have anything?
I have anything on this one.
Jeff? I not.
I do not.
May I have a motion, please?
Uh, public comment, please.
Huh? Public comment, sorry.
You're good.
Nobody in the audience. I always do that when nobody's here, unless you'd like to stand up and say. I don't know why.
No.
Is anybody on Zoom?
No one online.
Okay. Is there nobody online tonight? With that, may I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve final plans for zero zero one eight Silver Star Trail.
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Eric, aye.
Jeff, aye.
Lynn, aye.
Michael, aye.
Zero two two six Miles Inlay, change to the approved plans. Madison, please.
So, this is something that y'all have already seen changes to approved plans before, uh, so this is the second round. Uh, it's a four-bedroom, uh, four thousand two hundred and fifty-three square foot. It was last approved at three thousand nine hundred and eighty-two, so it increased by about two hundred and fifty, three hundred square feet. Um, the new roof height is twenty-seven feet, five and three-eighths inches. It was last approved at twenty-seven feet, one and seven-eighths inches, but it's still under the twenty-eight-foot height limit. Parking is still fine. Um, all setbacks are still fine. Uh, with the increase size of the building, it did increase lot and impervious coverage limiti- or percentages, but it's still within, uh, what's allowed on those lots. Uh, and then snow storage did decrease a little bit, but again, still, uh, the amount that's required, over the amount that's required. So, staff is recommending approval.
Michael, do you have anything?
I think you have public comment.
I will do public comment first.
Okay.
Anybody in the audience have anything to say? Any empty here? No.
No one online.
All right, moving on. I make a motion to approve zero two two six Miles Inlay.
Second.
Nobody had anything to say?
Sorry.
Nope.
You jumped ahead.
Sorry.
I jumped behind.
I don't know what you didn't say.
I didn't either.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Eric, aye.
Jeff, aye.
Lynn, aye.
Michael, aye.
Okay. Thanks for coming and spending time with us, being two people on our chairs.
Are they gonna, are they gonna finish the rest of the road down there? I know it's not you.
Next week.
Is that what it is? I'm like, oh, it's so nice over here. I'm like, yeah, but the rest of it.
Yep. We're working on it.
It looks good over there.
Thank you.
Good job.
We're excited to get it, get it finished for you.
Lot, lot going on all at once.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're making progress.
Thank you. How many are left? Six. Darn good. Yeah.
We'll, we'll be back for the next meeting.
Okay.
Thanks guys.
Bye. Next, eight eight six Main Street and eight nine two Main Street, variance requested for relief from minimum lot width. Madison?
Yes. So, I'm gonna be reading a lot of the stuff that was in my staff report, so I'm sure this is all gonna be a little bit boring, 'cause I'm sure you've already read it before, but just for the record, I have to put a lot of the stuff in here. So, uh, this is a request for relief from the fifty-foot minimum lot dimension, um, to allow for a subdivision of eight eighty-six and eight ninety-two Main Street into three lots within the South Town Residential Zone District. A little bit of background, uh, in fact, y'all should be a little bit more caught up about this, given that we talked about this at the last, uh, Planning Commission meeting in general. But, within every zone district, we currently have minimum lot width dimensions. In most zone districts, it's fifty feet wide and a one, like, the one hundred block is twenty-five feet wide, I believe, minimum. And then, I think we have one or two that are a hundred-foot wide, and those are the more larger industrial lots. So, that's one section of code that kind of typically gets lost within that big table within section sixteen, two forty. Uh, and then there's another section of code, section sixteen, seventeen, forty, that just deals with frontage. It requires a minimum of twenty-five feet of frontage along the highway. Um, I included the whole code section within that staff report. I won't go through that whole code section tonight, but it's, it's there for your reference. Unless I, obviously, y'all request it. So, uh, in, uh, the recent past and the not-sorecent past, uh, there's been selective administration of the minimum lot width. I, I don't think it's through the fault of staff. I, I think it's, again, it's, it's lost in that table. It's not something that's really ever brought up. The twenty-five-foot, uh, access to, uh, right-of-way, um, or a street, I think that's been the, the important thing to maintain via either easement or actual lot frontage on a, on a street. So, uh, and I apologize, I feel like I'm kind of jumping around. But, uh, the proposal, uh, is to take two fifty-foot wide lots, combine them into one, and then subdivide them into three. So, it's taking a whole total of a hundred feet wide, dividing them into three, about thirty-three feet wide apiece. Um, so, your, uh, the request is for about a thirty-three percent reduction from the minimum lot width of, of fifty feet. So, uh, in order for this, uh, Planning Commission to grant a variance, uh, there are approval criteria and then there are findings required. So, in the approval criteria, uh, the Planning Commission, uh, and subsequently the Town Council, uh, acting as the Zoning Board of Appeals, uh, will have to consider the following factors, uh, with respect to the requested variance. One, the relationship of the requested variance to other existing or potential uses and structures in the vicinity. Two, the degree to which relief from the strict or literal interpretation and enforcement to a specified regulation is necessary to achieve compatibility and uniformity of treatment among sites in the vicinity, or to attain the objectives of this chapter without grant or special pri- grant of special privilege. Three, the effect of the requested variance on light and air, distribution of population, transportation and traffic facilities, public facilities and utilities, and public safety. And four, such factors and criteria as the Planning Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals deem applicable to the proposed variance. And then findings required. You'll notice in the staff report, um, staff provided a response to each of the findings required that the Planning Commission needs to make. So, of the first one, that there are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applicable to the site of the variance that do not apply generally to other properties in the same zone. So, uh, uh, staff's response to that was, if you'll notice, staff went through and, and took screenshots of different measurements along GIS within the first couple pages of the staff report, uh, showing that there are several instances just in the immediate vicinity, um, not even all the way through town, just, just around those lots that are, uh, being talked about tonight, uh, where the minimum lot width is not met. Now granted, they, they come very close in a lot of instances, forty-eight feet, forty-nine feet. But they don't, they don't meet the fifty-foot wide minimum. And this is not just from a historical plating standpoint. I explained a little bit at the last meeting when we were talking about minimum lot width, um, in regards to changing just a lot frontage, that, uh, the South Town specifically, uh, character area operates or was annexed in under an annexation map. And then, we're finding as people go through and make actual plaits of their property, uh, often to subdivide them, 'cause they had a much larger property and they wanna subdivide them down. That the description of fifty feet by a hundred feet or fifty feet by a hundred and twenty-five feet, however, uh, deep they are, when you actually survey it in the field, isn't entirely accurate based on the whole annexation map. And then, you have more recent subdivisions, uh, like the example that I gave in, in the staff report of the Lucero subdivision, which as shown, uh, in the figures within the staff report, uh, even though they meet the minimum lot size, much like this proposal, uh, they don't meet the minimum lot width. Uh, and that was something that was processed in twenty-twenty, I believe. So, uh, not just around that, uh, general vicinity, the, uh, letter of intent included in the application also included many examples, uh, from the rest of town with which to provide, uh, other lots that do not meet the, the minimum lot width. So, uh, so that's finding number one, the, that there are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances. Number two, that the exceptional or extraordinary circumstances of the site create a situation in which the strict literal interpretation and enforcement of the specified regulation would result, excuse me, in prac- practical difficulty or unnecessary physical hardship inconsistent with the objectives of this chapter. Kind of coming down from the, the explanation that I just gave under number one. There are, due to the many examples, uh, in the surrounding area and throughout town of lots not meeting the minimum lot width requirement, uh, as put out into the code, that, obviously, has allowed for substandard lot width. The historic lot configuration, minimum lot frontage has been enforced, it appears, at the twenty-five feet, uh, due to the frontage section of the code, which staff believes presents exceptional conditions for the property owners. Finding number three, that the granting of the variance will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity, and will not result in substantial impairment to the purposes of this chapter. So, uh, chapter sixteen and chapter seventeen subdivisions, uh, are intrinsically linked. They are reliant on each other. A subdivision cannot be improved without conforming to, uh, zoning unless they get to a variance. Uh, and obviously, all zoning is within chapter sixteen, not seventeen. Uh, so, staff provided all of the intent statements for, uh, a minor subdivision to be granted, uh, as well as the definition of a minor subdivision, and staff, due to this conforming in all other ways, minimum lot size, um, uh, they have access, et cetera. They can have a buildable footprint while still respecting the setbacks within that zone district. Staff does not believe that this will be detrimental to public health. And finding number four, that there is no substantial impairment to the public that would result from the granting of this variance. Again, this conforms in all other ways, um, and having more residential lots, I think, is only, uh, to the good for this constrained valley, uh, so, we do not believe that it's, uh, substantial impairment to the public. Uh, so, for the following couple of pages of my staff report, I do provide excerpts that, from both the code and the community plan, that I believe support the granting of this variance. If you'd like, I can read those through, but they are there for your, for you to peruse. So, all that being said, uh, staff is recommending approval.
Eric?
Um, okay.
Please, thank you.
Uh, I guess I have some questions. Uh, do we have a person?
Yes, Tom is in.
Hi, Tom.
Hi.
Please state your name and address.
Tom Holden, one sixteen.
So, Tom, can you tell me, like, the purpose of the three lots? What is the, is it for affordable housing? Is it for what?
No, it's for single-family homes. I have two partners in this. Um, we plan to sell our large house that we live in now and then build a single-family home on one of the lots. Uh, the other partner is a college buddy who lives in New Jersey, and he'd like to retire out here. And the third partner has a home in Mentor now, and it's really just an investment for him. But it's not, it's just single-family homes.
So, full-time residents?
Uh, well, I'm a full-time resident. Uh, the other guy, I guess, when he retires, will be a full-time resident, and I really don't know what Mike, uh, plans to do with his lot. You know, he has, there's a small house on his lot that sits completely on his lot and, but doesn't meet the setbacks. I think ideally, he'd like to keep that there because, um, you know, there's a shortage of employee housing, and he'd like to help out. But, it's right on the property, right, what would be right on the new property line, so he'd have to get variances for setbacks. He also doesn't wanna go through a fight, and if the town would rather have him take it down, he'd take it down. If the town would rather have him keep it up, he'd keep it up, you know? But, if the town has him take it down, he'll probably just flip the lot. And if the town allows him to keep it up, he'll hold on to it just as a rental, and it'll be employee housing.
Okay. That's good for you right now.
Jeff?
Hey, Tom.
Hi, Jeff.
I guess a lot of those lines, I, I took a look at the plaque. I mean, first of all, I, I don't have a problem with the dimensional standards when it comes to the width. I agree with the staff's findings. With what's been done further on down the road and all, kind of, a, a lot of different places in town, eight sixty-six. Um, there's a, there's just a lot of reason to, uh, agree with the staff's findings there, and I also have, have, have been on the record, you know, promoting smaller lot sizes and more going back to the old twenty-five-foot wide lots that Mentor used to historically have. So, the fact that it meets the five thousand square foot, um, minimum size is, is fine with me, and I think that the plat looks great, the way that the driveways and the access are shown. But to your point, the existing home on eight six, on eight eighty-six, being on the lot line, you know, obviously, is a non-conformity. And the house that's on eight ninety-two would also be a non-conformity, given the new plat. So, I, I guess, I don't really see how anything could stay on these lots and then adhere to the plat that you have. So, I, I don't know that we can force you to remove things.
I think you can. Uh, I think, I mean, and I, our expectation is that we have to remove the trailer and the house. I think that, as I said, Mike would like to keep the house, because it would be good for the town and I guess good for him, 'cause he would hold on to the lot, but he's, he's like, hey, if you wanna get rid of it, get rid of it. You know, if we have to get rid of it. I mean, he's, he's fine with that. If you guys thought like, hey, man, employee housing is such a problem in this valley, we don't have a problem granting a variance for, for the setback, then he would keep the house, but he's okay tearing it down.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just think that sitting in this seat and approving a plat that shows setbacks and things like that, and that it would, I, I just feel like I, I wouldn't be able to necessarily say, like, I'm fine with it staying and being a non-conformity. I think we're, we're basically approving a, a plat that shows that.
We're not asking for that now.
Right.
And knowing that's kind of your feeling, we probably won't even come back and ask for it.
Yeah.
Unless I heard at the council, hey, we really would like to save an employee housing, and it's a
I would.
pretty mi- minor thing, then we would do it, but we don't want, we wanna do what the town wants to do.
Yeah, I think that's probably more of a town council thing, you know?
You know, so, it's, he's happy either way.
Okay. I, like I said, I, I, I think the plat looks fine. I, I, I don't have a problem with thirty-three-foot wide lots. I had more of a problem, you know, back in the day, in subdividing lots front to back. You know, the fact that these lay out the way that they lay out, I think everything looks fine to me, so I don't have a problem with that. Those are my comments.
Michael? Michael?
I have, uh, I have some questions and and then I probably also have questions for staff, but I think that probably comes after public questions or at the same time, or what?
Come at the very beginning, I missed it. Go ahead.
Basically, reading Michael Pukas' letter is a little concerning to me, if it's all true. And, that being said, either staff missed that part of the code, or, which, I, I, I will have other questions in regards to that, the poor Madison can answer, 'cause she's over there by herself. But who, who did you specifically talk to in regards to where you were told that the thirty-foot lots would be okay prior to spending all that money?
I've been doing subdivisions in town for more than twenty years. And that section of the code has never been applied. So, like, when I subdivided the lots at the end of Taylor Street, it's like five forty to five fifty, five sixty Taylor Street, where Rob and, uh, the council lady live and stuff like that. They were five twenty-five-foot lots, and we combined them into three, what turned out to be basically forty-two-foot lots, you know? And that wasn't an issue then, and that was back in two thousand and five, I think I did that. When I subdivided eight oh one Main Street and seven ninety-five Main Street, it wasn't an issue then either, and that was in, like, two thousand and nine. It was never brought up. When I did the subdivision on Boulder and Main Street, or not, you know, to me, I, I, when I read the code, I don't read width, I read dimension. I don't see where it says width. I say, it says minimum lot, minimum lot, maximum lot slash, you know, min-max slash, and I'm like, one, I don't really understand what min-max means, and two, dimension. Dimension isn't width. Width is a dimension, but dimension doesn't mean width, and it, you know, it just doesn't. So, like, if you have a lot that goes like this, and then, like, maybe L shape, you very well could have a dimension that's not fifty feet. It, it could be fifty feet wide, but then you're gonna have a L that goes, you know, fifteen feet and then back up, and so, sixty-five feet at the back. You have a dimension on that lot that is not fifty feet. Right? So, I think that that section of the code is nonsensical. I don't think it is actually correct, which I, probably is why it's been ignored for twenty-five years that I've been doing this. So, back to the question. I went to see Scott, you know, hey, it's, is, we bought these two lots, it was close to a million and a half dollars. You know, it's a lot of money. It's five half a million bucks for each of us. So, I wanted to make sure the way I interpret the code is the way Scott interpreted the code. And we all know our code has some deficiencies, and so, when you have that kind of money on the line, you wanna dot your i's and cross your t's. So, I went to Scott and he said, yeah, it, it meets the requirements, you know? You've got, uh, five thousand feet, and you have more than twenty-five feet of frontage for each lot. And, um, I said, great, you know? So, when, when we went to the pre-application meeting, you know, this started last fall, I was surprised that we were being required to get a variance. So, you know, I, I don't, I don't know. I mean, it, that's the way things have been done, so it didn't surprise me that Scott said that. You know, I mean, that's the way I interpreted it. That's the way the code's been interpreted for twenty-five years that I've been doing this. So, and as I say, I don't think that that section, that there's this little table in that, that says that. I don't, I don't think that is explicitly saying the width, and it doesn't say width, it says dimension. So, I just think it doesn't add up. There are a lot of things in our code that don't, don't add up, so I think people ignored it, or didn't apply it. But, to answer your question, I met with Scott, and, and we had that, and Scott said that I could do what I was gonna do, so we invested in money. Hey, we would've bought it, we almost bought it with two people anyway, but then we're like, hey, we're getting older, we're gonna need these big yards, you know? Be less money, we'll bring another person in, you know, so. But if he'd said, no, you're gonna need, you know, you need fifty feet width, we just, we would've bought it with two people instead of buying it with three people. But, that's where, but Scott was the one who said that. But it didn't surprise me that he said that. That's what I'd expected him to say, because that's what we've been doing in practice for twenty-five years. And he, you know, when Lynn and Woody subdivided the trailer off the back of, you know, this was the same staff, same council, off the back of the gas station lot, Lucero's lot, you know, that, that, their lot was forty-six feet wide, it wasn't an issue, you know, and so, when was that done? That was done last year, twenty twenty-four, May twenty twenty-four. So, I, I mean, that's, that's the way it's been done in town. I mean, so, that I'm being asked for a variance is a surprise to me. You know, so, but I met with Scott.
Uh, would now be inappropriate time to ask Madison a question?
Sure.
Sure.
Sorry, Madison, you get the hard questions.
I'm aware.
You're stuck out there. You must think about the short straw. The, uh, so, do we, this, do we, the staff know when we actually became aware of this fifty-foot part of the code? That, it's a two-part question, that we're now applying. And, and then the second part of that question, after we became aware of that, has been applied to anybody since we became aware of that?
So, uh, and I apologize, Tom, I am the one that flagged this section of code when you went through the pre-application process. So, I, I obviously can't speak to, to what Tom spoke to Scott about, but when, uh, we received the draft plat in order to, or the draft layout of what would become the plat, in order to have the pre-application process, in October, November, December?
Octo- I think the pre-application was probably October-ish. We absolutely didn't apply until December.
Right.
So, yeah.
Um, I was just like, hey, this, this doesn't, this doesn't meet the fifty-foot lot width. And, uh, um, and everybody was just like, what? No, that's, that's, that's not a, it meets the twenty-five-foot frontage. I was just like, yeah, but it, it doesn't meet the tw- fifty-foot lot width. And so, I flagged that late last year, and since then, we've only had combination, um, like, one sixty-one Main and one sixty-one Nelson combining. We've only had combination lots since then, so it hasn't been an issue.
So, Woody's was approved before you figured that out?
Mm-hmm.
So, we haven't had, and, so, technically, and, until something changes, potentially with the new code.
Right.
Where that's going to currently apply.
Yes. Like, not to, I, I didn't put it in my staff report for a reason, but given the discussion we had at the last meeting about changing, no, 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 you're good, uh, changing fifty- Changing, no, 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 you're good, uh, changing fifty-foot lot widths to just require instead twenty-five foot frontage. Like it is now. That that might become relevant in, you know, six months when the code gets adopted.
No, I I I I appreciate you answering that question honestly, I respect that for sure and. I am.
So you interpreted as twenty fifty-foot width?
Yes. So, uh, Tom is right, I I double-checked the the heading on the. Table for general lot dimensions. Um, it does say lot dimension, um, however. Excuse me, um, within our definitions. We do not, I believe, have a definition for lot dimension, we have a definition for lot width. I'm double-checking. Yep, we don't have a a definition for lot dimension, we just have a definition for lot width.
Eric's a teacher. What do you, what like, do we need to be here for variance? What do you think, Eric?
And I can't explain the whole min max.
Do you wanna help us out with this?
So up until we adopted the one hundred block standards, we had a, uh, just a minimum lot dimension. Uh, but then as part of the one hundred block going through, we were just like, hey, we don't want people to come in. And buy up a bunch of lots in the one hundred block and like create a whole block-long building, so we put in a max dimension for the one hundred block. So that's the only lot, or that's the only row within the dimensional standards table that has both a minimum and a maximum of twenty-five and seventy-five. Feet wide so that people can't create bigger lots than seventy-five hundred, cause seventy-five by one hundred. But unfortunately, because none of the other. Rows in that table have like a. N A for maximum lot dimension, like a fifty-foot wide minimum slash N A for maximum lot dimension. I can see where the confusion comes from. Like I could explain it, cause I was there, but if I wasn't there, I I could definitely see where the.
I didn't even know it existed, to tell you, I didn't know that that section existed. Until it was pointed out.
Right.
And you, are you saying that table, that little bit of the table that was just added a few years ago?
No. No, yes. Yeah, when when I I flagged it in October. I was just like, oh, oh, yeah. That's how we got to the keeping the one hundred block lots, putting limitations on how big they are. And then we promptly forgot about that column of code. So, uh, I apologize, I shouldn't be making light of us not. Following our our code entirely. But yes, so that's that's the reasoning behind that min-max confusion and.
But to your point, as in like you said, that in that table. The top of the table. Says min lot slash max lot dimension in feet and. You would think that every. Everything in there would have a number and then a slash and then another number, meaning this is the minimum. Slash, this is the maximum, and the only spot where that occurs is in hundred block, where it says twenty-five slash seventy-five. Which obviously means twenty-five is the minimum, seventy-five is the maximum. Everywhere else, there's either N A or one number. And how is anyone supposed to know what? One number means, is that the min or is that the max? And to Tom's point. It doesn't say, but it does say what the minimum lot size should be. Which is five thousand square feet, which he meets, so. I don't know, like to get hung up for lack of a better word on. That gigantic gray area in the code which says. You know, is that the max that the lot has to be, could could be as fifty feet or is that the minimum? Doesn't say. Right? Just says fifty.
It's it's hard, if if it's unknown, if it's unknown and. Madison's newer than Scott, and if it's unknown, if it's unknown, it's sorta. Uh, it's good that it was found for sure, but if it's unknown. Like me personally, I I like, I mean, I guess it, because it's unknown, that's why we're here for variance. Apparently, uh, but if it's unknown. I believe his biggest hardship is that it's applied to him.
Like, it's it's just to Tom's point, like, is it, does it really need a variance or does it not?
I I I I agree with that.
Feels like a cover your butt from the town's standpoint of like, we're going through this process because. That doesn't say exactly yea or nay, like, is it a minimum or a maximum? If it was a maximum.
No, we're here, we're here at this point. We're here at this point, there's a lot of stuff that's been figured out that you can see as far as the twenty-five foot. Getting out into the road, putting easements in. Taking care of pretty much a a full application. You know, I I and I think we're here. I agree that we're here for cover your butt.
The hardship is the fact that you don't know.
The correct, that that you were that you were unaware. Is is sorry, because I'm not a big variance guy for a fact. You know that, and and. Because of the discrepancies and and where we're at to this point. I think the hardship is like you stated.
And on the flip side of that, you've got a lot of homes in the area that don't meet that. If you're looking at that as a minimum, then there's probably half the half the homes in that zone. Potentially don't meet that fifty feet.
I have a question for Tom.
Means that they're all.
Yeah.
A nothing for me.
Well, I I well, still not hardship, but I get that, but my but the other hardship I agree with. My my, as you well know, as you well know, as I also know. Twenty-five foot lots tough. You can do it. I have a front garage, okay? Twenty-five foot is. You you better have your staircase figured out well. If you're if you're gonna have your five-foot side setbacks, are you confident that you can? Keep your set fa- set five-foot setbacks on?
These are thirty.
These are thirty-three.
You have a twenty-one.
Yeah, I know that, yeah, no, you have overs, you can fit.
Yeah, it's it's easy, I mean.
Cause right now, we're, right now, and we've been hanging pretty steady on the five-foot minimum, just for fire, so. That's 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 the only question I had.
Yeah, now this, I mean, we've designed a house, our our problem is. You know, keeping it under the square footage, cause of the tap requirements, so it's not, you can build a nice house.
Cause you gotta roll your one over and whatever you get one, yeah, I got that, I understand that part specifically.
You can build nice homes, you don't have a stair issue or anything like that.
No, especially when you have five thousand feet. I'm good for now. Go ahead, Lynn.
Okay, where do I start? Number one, I agree with Jeff on taking down the homes that are there and starting over. I find that the word employee housing is used too flippantly in the respect that. Whether a real employee will be able to afford the rent on it. And I think rents have gotten way out of hand, and of course, ten landlords can get what they can get, and that's what they want to do.
We had two thousand for a two-bedroom house on it, but.
But still, and I'm going to.
The thing is, you all know Jerika, Jerika lives there, Jerika's not gonna have a home, kinda sucks, but what I get it.
I'm going back in, and it depends on Jerika's job too, obviously, what he.
Jerika, yeah, she's the camp counselor, runs the Avon Rec Center or something.
And she may have a roommate, which helps.
She has a roommate, she has a partner and baby.
Right, right. But I have a real hard time when people use that word employee housing.
I get it.
And, I mean, when I bought my home, needless to say, it was not these prices. I pay, I made nine dollars an hour. And I was lucky enough to do it, but I worked three jobs. Certainly up to now, to pay two thousand dollars a month. Employees' wages haven't gone up that much. I mean, they'd have had, they'd have to be like forty dollars an hour to be able to pay that rent. So you're talking about a fineliner, and that's just my thing, I don't like that, so I would agree with houses coming down, making it a clean start from scratch. Number two, I disagree with Jeff on going back to twenty-five foot lots, and I have said that openly, but I think it depends on where they are. Currently, there's talk about doing that to Pine Street, and I know the people on Pine Street don't want that, I know there are other people in town who don't want that. They bought their homes as their dreams, and they want to live in a s- area where it's single-family homes and peaceful and quiet. You're on Ma- Main Street, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, and so that becomes questionable, and they are thirty-three feet, which is a little bit bigger. But what I would love to see, and which is what you have to do, and I'm sorry about that, is I'd like to see subdivisions of this. Type coming before planning and zoning rather than being approved by the planning director, because I think the neighbors need to be made aware of it. And that's real important to me. If you bought a single-family home thinking you were gonna live in that type of residential neighborhood. And that is what's important to you, I think it's wrong to start letting this happen. I don't think it's wrong to let, start letting it happen in new developments. Because people come in knowing that. And that's that, you know, the people on the river have more money than the people on Pine Street. They've got more, you know, five thousand square feet is great, I'm glad that you came to that. And it's a twenty, if it's ten feet, it makes it thirty, twenty-three feet you have to work with, does it not?
Yeah, but you know, you like to have a little wiggle on it.
Okay.
The home that I have designed is twenty-one feet, you know, so.
But I didn't wanna state that on public record too, that I feel like. When it's this kind of thing in an already established neighborhood that you're reducing lot sizes, I think some of the neighbors need to be made aware of it. And I don't think that happens when staff is the person approving it. I think it needs to come before us. I. Kinda feel like, I don't know the variances either, but I kinda feel like covering your BIP is the way to go. For the town, because then it sets precedent in another way, and I don't want to do that. But, um, again, I like them, I appreciate the way you worked it out, you know, by combining it. If we're two fifty-foot lots, obviously, CDO probably couldn't stop you from putting in another road cut.
I don't know how that works.
Yeah, because that's kinda giving them the space they want, but. And you're, you know the people who are buying it, you're working together, you're not putting them out there necessarily to sell. And you're willing to work with that type of an easement. Now, whether that happens in the future is always left to be said too.
It was on the plat.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's not, it it can't be changed, I mean, without everybody.
So my vote would be in this case. Specifically to say yes. But with the variance.
Go ahead, Eric. Got any questions?
So you're saying, so you have a question?
Maybe the one that could be used as a rental property? Take that one down also? Even though that could be used for Jeriko or something like that.
I mean, that's something that would have to be, how big is that house?
It's small, it's under a thousand feet.
Oh, that's.
You know, it's Hazel's, it's Otto's, it's Hazel's dad's house, what's his name?
Couldn't that be then considered an A D U?
Well, I I don't know, the the problem is that it sits. Literally on the property line, like two inches from the property line, so that's, the trailer kind of. Probably splits it in the middle and it's a trailer, and the trailer's gonna come off, but. As I say, that that's really, it's probably a council decision if they would like to keep it, and I don't wanna muddy this up now. And it would probably be something that. I would try to get a feeling from the staff or the council, and if they thought it was a good idea, we'd come back and do it in another. Uh, I guess variance or whatever it would be, but if if they if they were like, no, we. Don't wanna give, we don't wanna do that, then.
Is that the back of the lot?
No.
It was right up front.
And due to the letter of intent representing that the plat will not be recorded until the. I'm paraphrasing, but that the plat won't be finalized essentially until the non-conforming structures are removed.
Right. It would have to be a whole another.
Right.
It's application and, you know, the guy who's. Gonna get that lot has to make that determination if he wants to go through with it and. We, it would have to almost be like, you know, you guys say, hey, we would like that to stay because we'd like employee housing for him to do it. And.
I guess when I'm in this.
Does it say on the lot?
It's on the lot, exactly. I don't wanna get another variance application.
You cannot stop somebody from applying for something.
But you know, Lynn, when you were talking about, you know, I'm pretty sure all Pine Street, I know these lots are, most of the lots in town are some duplex.
Yes, right, they are, but twenty-five foot, no duplex, fifty-foot.
Fifty-foot for a duplex, well, what's the difference between having two twenty-five-foot ho- homes or one, I'd rather have two twenty-five-foot homes. Than one big duplex, I mean, that's just, you know, I'm just, we're talking about different things, but you know, that's the way.
I don't think people wanna see either, I think they want this to be a single-family neighborhood.
Right, it's a duplex.
Right.
Yeah, and you you know, you know one of this, and I know, but you know that on the old Main Street, whatever that's called, if you go.
West Main Street, going towards Cottonwood or something?
Going through, going towards the Serv Hotel. So if you go like three blocks over, they've divided all those, like a big block, you know. Into twenty-five, twenty-five by one twenty-five, and they're really nice houses on them. They let them go down to three feet, so they're eighteen-foot wide houses. But next time you're in one of this, you should go look at that, because it's a nice development of twenty-five-foot wide lots.
I'm not into that kind of setbacks on the side of the house with the.
I understand, but.
Especially up on this road with that hillside behind us.
It's it's a, when you think like, wow, these are twenty-five-foot lots, wide lots.
Tell me there's one on Main Street, just to the west of.
Well, there are a lot, there are a lot on Main Street.
You built that one, didn't you?
Uh, no, I didn't build one on Main.
Okay, I thought you had.
No, that, I think that was the, an architect that went in there and he.
Architect built it, I forget who the actual builder was, but then, you know, the lady who bought the house up in Red Cliff, they have that little twenty-five-foot. Next to your sister's house, that's a twenty-five-foot wide lot.
Christie.
Christie.
Christie and.
And Nathan.
I I mean, I think it it adds to the character of the town, to tell you the truth, I mean, I think Christie's house is great, I think that tall skinny house is cool too. I mean, I'm more in line with Jeff, but that, you know, it's different strokes for different folks.
It's country music and rock music.
I like what.
How about go chilly?
Actually, it's country and western.
I I in regards to what Lynn said about. You know, having these things come in front of us. You know, I have to agree with her on that, just because, you know, nobody really knows and and then. And then we get to this point and. Bad things happen, but I did have a question for you, what were you saying? In regards to the buildings, you said. Potentially having buildings removed prior to final or something?
Yes, so, uh, as part of the subdivision, uh, or well, in the letter of intent that Michael Cook has submitted, I'm paraphrasing. Um, but it states that prior to recordation of the plat with the county and making it official. That the structures that are non-conforming will be removed from the lot. Um, so that's part of the subdivision, not the variance, but it was in the, and since y'all are talking about the structure, I thought it relevant to.
So what does that mean, like technically, technically, if we're approving the subdivision, that condition applies?
You're not approving the subdivision, you're approving the variance to the minimum lot width. But the sta- but Planning Commission does not review minor subdivisions, so like you see the plat, obviously, it's part of the application because they're requesting. An exception from chapter sixteen, minimum lot width, but the actual subdivision is processed under chapter seventeen.
By who? Council?
No, it it, well, it's signed by the mayor, but it's processed and approved by staff.
And I'm gonna just, I know this is probably jumping ahead and I should, I'm probably gonna get scolded for this, but.
You're scolded.
Welcome, my world.
Well, I'm just gonna say. Well, I'm just gonna say that the next conversation that we're gonna have on the agenda is about the new zoning. And in every new zone that's being proposed, that part of the table is being stricken. So there will not be a minimum lot dimension. It's just gone. In every zone, because it's so stupid.
I saw that.
I, I did, I could not put that in my staff report because that's not something that I can say, hey, what you're gonna do in the future.
But I'm just saying like, we're practically speaking.
It is practical and it is relevant.
It is very relevant, like, I, I think it's kind of dumb to.
So is, so is C Y A.
Well, that, that's a legal thing. And we're, we're, we do probably need to give Tom relief from that to cover the town's legal aspect. And I don't have a problem with it because it meets all of the others.
I would agree with that specific statement.
If he didn't have water, if he didn't have five thousand square feet. There's a lot of things.
He fixed the driveway.
To me, this is like, like I've been saying for years, that this moves towards the way things used to be, where people shared driveways to get their twenty-five foot lot to get to maximize it. It's in, it's with the spirit of what the town used to be, in my opinion. I know you don't like it.
I'm just thinking of where you live.
Where I live is different. It's not an innie thing, I'm just saying where I live, the code is different. Now, we, we will be talking about it later.
Changing the code on Pine Street, you could change the code at yours at the same time.
It is being proposed to be changed. No, but it's being proposed to be changed to.
We can argue about that later in the next. I got some good ones on that.
Okay, so who's got a motion?
I need public comment to.
Oh, public comment.
No one online. No one online. Thank you.
Thank you.
Why do you look at me for?
Who's got the motion?
I think I landed it there.
Eric, currently you're up.
Uh, you're up, Eric.
I'll make the motion. I make a motion to approve the variance for eighty-eighty-six, eight ninety-two Main Street because it has it meets the requirements before requirements that were read earlier specific to I'm gonna read it. Number one, there are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions that apply to the variance that do not generally apply to other properties in the same zone. There are exceptional or, and, or extraordinary circumstances of the site, circumstances of the site that create a situation in which the strict literal interpretation and enforcement of the specified regulation would result in a practical difficulty or unnecessary physical hardship. Number three, the granting of the variance will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity, and will not result in substantial impairment of the purposes of the chapter. And lastly, there are, is no substantial impairment to the public that would result from the granting of the variance.
May I have a second? Motion by Jeff, second by Eric, is there any further discussion? We'll call vote. Michael.
You go first one.
Jeff, aye.
What we're voting on, once again, please repeat.
You're voting on the request for relief from the minimum wa- lot width dimension.
Yes, we're not approving the plat.
You are not.
We are not approving the subdivision, we are giving our ruling on the relief from the, the fifty-foot dimensional standard which is in the code, which is pretty gray. And doesn't apply to half of the other properties in town.
Well, I go for further discussion. And the reason was because I wish we had noticed the neighbors.
They were noticed. Any variance requires notice of everybody with, any public hearing requires notice of any property within two hundred and fifty feet. I have the, I have the certified slips from Tom to prove.
I'd go with the hardship that he has counting on discussions with something that got overlooked from staff. The gray area that we better not have any more gray areas.
That's why it's not in the new proposed code.
As long as I know the neighbors weren't informed, that is mine. Because I think that's really important.
Yeah, you can't do this without noticing.
Here's noticing, the sign's been up for whatever twelve days or something.
Oh, one of those big ones, okay. I've been down the hill, okay.
I vote yes, because of the gray area and the future proceedings.
And the C Y A, it's the only reason. No more C Y As.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
I might need to take a five minute, minute to breathe.
Matt, we're taking a five-minute recess.
Good evening, Matt.
Matt, Scott's not here, so you're gonna have to pick it off.
Okay, let me know when you all are ready.
We're ready.
You're ready, okay. Well, so this evening, we're delving back into the review of the new zone districts.
Sorry, Matt, I can't hear you.
We're gonna crank you up to eleven.
It's only us in here, don't worry about it.
All right. That's okay, I'm, I'm being recorded anyway, so I'll, I'll be careful what I say. Are, are you guys good to go? Can you hear me? All right, uh, so I'll just start over. So tonight, we are delving back into the use tables and dimensional standards that are proposed for the new zone districts. Um, and the new zone districts, just for some context, those are largely uh, those, those really originated from the community plan, uh, the, the twenty-twenty-three community plan. And in that plan, there's a, a whole section on recommended zoning districts. And we, uh, uh, as staff did our best to kind of hold true to those recommendations, and so that's that's how we approach the consolidation of existing zone districts into these new zone districts. And specifically this evening, our hope is to review and discuss R one, R two, R three, Makerspace, and then uh, there's three mixed-use zone districts, M U one, M U two, and M U three. Uh, and if it's necessary, um, I mean, it, and it's solely up to you guys, because I'm not the one running the show here, but if you need to, if we need to continue the discussion, uh, into August, that's, that's fine, and we can certainly do that. I just wanted to, to make note of that. And I will, in your packet, there was a memo, um, that kinda outlined some of the, the same information you've already seen. Uh, we also included, based on the, the discussion at the, the first meeting in July, we included a list of existing different definitions for, uh, land uses. That, that comes directly from the, the town's existing code. And then we've also included for, for land uses that aren't defined, some example definitions. And, and I wanna emphasize that they're examples, so we, our hope is not to get into the weeds about wordsmithing those at this stage in the process. We'll do that, uh, at a later point in time. But we thought it was important to, to define, or at least provide some examples of what different types of uses mean to, to support your review of the, um, the proposed changes. And with that, uh, also included in the memo are, um, are the recommendations that the Planning Commission provided a number of years ago. We've listed those based on, um, the, the new zone district they're applicable to. We've also included the most current version of all input that's been received by the town, via the open houses that were held in June, and then the online input form that's still open. Um, I believe Madison, correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, that's still available for folks, and we've gotten I, I will note, we did receive one new comment regarding R two, um, the, the, the new R two zone district that we've included in the table. But, uh, all the other comments for R one, R two, and R three were, uh, provided in your packet for the, the first meeting in July. Um, we've also included comments and recommendations for the Makerspace Zone District, and then the three mixed-use zone districts. And with that, that's kinda all I have in terms of a presentation. Um, if we wanna do what we did last time and kinda walk through the, the new zone districts, uh, one by one, and if you guys have any questions, comments, uh, we would be happy to respond to those, um, or take note of those. And actually, before, before I wrap up, I will note uh, we as staff are, are keeping a list of recommended changes as we go through this, this review process. And, um, so at the end, when, when we bring this to a conclusion, we'll come back with a compilation of those recommendations um, and, and provide, just share those with you all to, to confirm that, that we're, uh, all on the same page. And then if there's any items, like at the last meeting, it was requested that we take a closer look at the Civic Zone District and the, uh, dimensional standards for that. And so, um, at, at the end, we'll, we'll bring back, um, further information about that, and we, we can kind of button up any loose ends that there might be.
Okay, who's starting?
So you're gonna go through it one by one?
No, uh, your plaque.
Give your comments on that section, so if we're doing R one, give your comments, Michael.
Uh, I don't, I, I would rather go later on R one and hear what everybody else has to say because at the last meeting, I had had surgery and I did not go through that specifically. And and I don't have that this packet.
Well, I have it. No, I brought mine. But it was on the last one, I don't think it was on today's.
Is it in here? I apologize.
Do not is.
It's my fault.
Forward. Keep going.
So I guess to start with, Matt, can you besides it being the locations in town, why do we have, what, why do we have R one, R two, and R three? Just locations and different uses for residential and lot sizes in those locations?
Yeah, I mean, that's my understanding is, is sort of the, the context of what's and the character of, of the Minter's existing neighborhoods and, and existing zone districts. Um, a- a- and again, that, the R one, R two, and R three came out of the community plan, so we, we've tried our best to hold true to, to those recommendations from the community plan. So that, that's where that, that originated from, but, uh, yes, I, I think the intent is R one is, has a slightly different character than R, R two. So R one is largely Old Town, what, what today is sort of the Old Town character area. R two is primarily South Town, and then R three is, uh, Mart- the Martin Creek area.
So like, for example, oh, one quick question, 'cause you know, you've been writing all this stuff. In all the different zones, we haven't changed our side setbacks down from five feet, is that correct?
So I'm just looking here, so in R one, and, and one of the challenges that we encountered um, is, so in the consolidation of existing zone districts, we're combining, so for example, R one combines properties that are currently in the, in the Cross Creek mixed, mixed-use zone district, the Cross Creek Residential South Zone District, and the Old Town Residential Zone District. And so each of those existing zone districts has different dimensional standards and, and allowed uses. And so i- in consolidating those into a single zone district, it's, it was a, a bit of a required a bit of brain damage to do that, but, um, we tried to kinda not take away anybody's, um, existing rights. We've tried to, especially in terms of dimensional standards, keep the most flexible or, or the most, uh.
I see you have some variables in regards to side setbacks in regards to the different R one, R two, and R three. I guess basically my question was, is we don't have, our, our current code says five feet, and we're not changing anything down from that five feet in this new proposed code.
Right, no, yeah, so R one front setback would be ten feet minimum, our, uh, rear yard would be five feet and um, I'm sorry. Front yard would be ten feet, side yard would be five feet, and rear yard would be ten feet.
Yeah, I, I saw that, and then the one thing you know, I mean, in R, you know, R one, for example, R one, let me back up. I know originally when we started this process, we said we were gonna go through, talk about the changes, make some changes, revisit the affected areas in town to see if anybody else had any change, you know, still had objections and this and that, and, and it definitely seems like you know, it's, it's getting pushed at this point, and that isn't really the specific plan. And more specifically, uh, in regards to R one, R one, you've got the, the lot area dropped down to twenty-five hundred square feet, which would make twenty-five foot frontage, which would make the smaller lots. And, you know, and I can understand like, like Lynn had mentioned earlier, like on s- on new construction, if that's what you got, that's what you have, but you know, I, I guess for, for example, uh, you know, po- you know, Pine Street, and I, as well as I also know that there was a lot of twenty-five foot, and there still are twenty-five foot lots in town. Originally, in the past, we were trying to get away from the twenty-five foot and getting the twenties back to fifties as a minimum, and it, you know, that, that has changed from there. But, you know, in certain neighbor, in certain neighborhoods, you know, people that have fifty fi- fifty-foot lots don't protect, you know, as well as we have some, even though they have a right to an extra tap, we definitely have water issues that we don't even know about once everything gets online. know about once everything gets online. And as well as we can get into my neighborhood on a different example when we get to that point, but as far as as far as far as our, as far as our one goes, anybody in R one, not anybody, if you buy the property to develop it, to make money, two lots and two houses, you're gonna make more money. That's just the way that it's gonna go. But, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the families and, you know, old timers, which I'm now becoming one of, you know, a a lot of the you know, the the families, for example, on Pine Street live in their 50 foot lots. You know, I think that, you know, their opinions do count, you know, I think the people that that, you know, I think a lot of the stuff online and a lot of the opinions that we have no idea specifically if people had opinions four times or five times of the same opinion. I think that the opinions of the people in the neighborhoods should have, you know, more, it should be weighted weighted more. And I can understand that, you know, if you've had your neighbors and and I'll just use Pine Street, for example, if you've had your neighbors for 50 years, you know, does somebody want someone buying their house and throwing two on it? You know, I I know that Jeff did have a good point that you potentially can put a duplex, which is, you know, the same thing, but, you know, again, then it goes back, you know, I've always had a hard time, not a hard time, but, you know, the the online submittals in a lot of our stuff that we took three or four years ago now, you know, I think the 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 weight of the people in those neighborhoods that that actually live there and speak, you know, needs to be considered a little bit just as much as more or more than the not unanimous, but whatever it's called. Just individual votes online with no names attached to it. That's all I got right now on that.
I'm going. So looking at our one, first of all, Tom said there were duplexes allowed on Pine Street. That's Old Town character area. They aren't, they were not. According to what was in the past, right in front of me, they were allowed in Cross Creek area and they were allowed in Cross Creek mixed use and residential. They were not allowed in the residential zone of the Old Town character area. There weren't, under limited use, they were not allowed. Accessory apartments and accessory dwelling units are allowed, were allowed. So therefore, I am still adamantly against changing Pine Street's minimum build to 2,500 square feet. And I can tell you from people that have spoken to me that there are many people who do not want that also. Which is not surprising since they don't want the mixed use going in either. There are a lot of families. There are a lot of people bought them for single family homes because they were able to do it. Pine Street has always been one of the most wanted residential neighborhoods in Minter. I noticed we're not changing anything on Taylor Street. And of course, I'm sure people would be coming in here to discuss that because they've always fought for themselves too. And I think that's what's starting to happen on Pine Street. So I'm adamantly against that. The people who live in those neighborhoods, many of them have been here many, many, many years. They're third generations Minter people. And you start doing this type of development and already it's hard for them to even meet their prices. Now you can say, well, they can get those big prices and move somewhere else. That's not what they want. They want to be able to remain here and their children to remain here. And in my case alone, the house next door to me sold for almost two and a half million dollars last year. That's a difficult situation. And building prices aren't gonna go down. You're gonna put more and more homes in there. The prices are gonna go up and up. And all those people are gonna have to leave this town. And I think that is the wrong way to go at this. There are people in here who live in big houses, who live in residential neighborhoods that are gonna be able to remain that way. Why them and why not Main Street? And, I mean, Pine Street, I'm sorry, I apologize. So as far as that goes, I think leaving it single family with additional dwelling units, no duplexes in that section because that was incorrectly stated in our previous meeting just a few minutes ago. It's only duplexes in the other two. And leaving it the way it is, the way people love it. I can tell you that people all the time stop me on the street. I had one person meet me at my car and say, would you take an offer on your house? And I said, no, I will not. I get things in the mail. It is what it is. And if in the future, somebody else thinks somewhere down the line along them, then maybe change it. But I can tell you right now, today, people don't want it. Thank you.
My turn?
Yep.
Well, I'm just gonna give you my my take on why I am still pushing for smaller lot sizes. I don't look at it through the lens of how big your lot is, how many square feet your lot is. I look at setbacks. And whether it's a single family home or a duplex or a fiveplex, to me, how you're, i- if you're, if you're a family that's owned a fifty foot 5,000, 8,000 square foot lot on Pine Street for 50 years and your neighbor sells and there's a small house on that lot, let's say it's your neighbor that sold the two and a half million dollar house. And they plow that down. The the house that's currently sitting next to you is not five feet from your property line. And because of the setbacks, but the setbacks in on Pine Street are five feet, I believe, the side yard setbacks are five, are currently five feet. Most of the houses built on Pine Street are not built to the setback. Like most of the redeveloped homes on Main Street are shoehorned in right to the setback. Every last inch, right to the setback on all four sides. And it looks that way as you drive down Main Street now, where the new big homes are maximized. And they are built right to the five foot and then the house next door is built right to its five feet. So they sit exactly 10 feet apart. And the overhangs on the roofs are maybe 18 inches into the setback. So now your eaves are only seven feet away from each other. My, the way I look at the way a lot in a street scape feels is more based on the side yard setback or the front yard setback or the rear yard setback than it is the size of the of the lot and the size of the home on the lot. So the way I'm playing devil's advocate here with my 2,500 square foot lot is you're still gonna have to adhere to the setback, whether you have a 25 foot lot or a 50 foot lot. And if if and when the day comes when the old owners of the properties on Pine Street or anywhere else in town sell, more than likely, the house that's on the lot is gonna get torn down. And it's gonna get rebuilt and it's gonna get rebuilt right to the setback. And when you walk out your door and you see the new home next door that's right built to the five yard setback, do you really care that there might be another one 30 feet away from you that that does the same thing? Is that any different if they maximize from side yard to side yard and that, they're gonna build a 40 foot wide house? But if it got split into two 25 foot lots, you're gonna have two houses that are only 15 feet wide with 10 feet in between them. You're gonna have another family there. But is that any worse than a gigantic 40 foot wide house that is maximizing at 28 feet tall? And I don't know that when you look at it through the li- the lens of of how wide the lot is, that that is not the driving factor of how Pine Street feels if and when the day comes that it gets redeveloped and new homes get built. So that's why I'm
It creates a different feeling because it is so much denser.
Well, obviously, you're, yeah, but it's also, it also feels dense if the house is 45, if if the house is built from setback to setback, the new house. Because it's giant. And it's not, and Pine Street is not full of giant houses right now.
But 25 foot lots with 20 foot wide homes, they go up to 28 feet, which we don't have many on Pine Street either.
No, you can't have, you can't have a house that's, if you have a 25 foot wide lot, you can only have a house that's 15 feet wide.
High.
28 feet what high?
It it could be 28 feet high, but it can only be 15.
28 feet high, right next to your five foot setbacks.
10 feet in between each one. But that to me feels different than one giant 40 foot wide house that is one.
I still argue the shared easement for driveways.
Well, that's, that's a different thing, but I'm just saying like, that's my my interpretation of of lot width and smaller lot size to allow for a lower price point. And obviously, when the day comes, it is.
It has to be lower.
It has to be. You can't sell, you can't sell a 2,500 foot lot for the same price that you can sell a 5,000 square foot lot.
No, what we are doing is taking a 25, a 50 square foot lot, dividing it in half to make two 25 square foot lots, which therefore each, right now on Pine Street, if somebody bought the house next door to me and divided it in half, each lot would cost $1,250,000.
Maybe.
They can't, won't go for less than it.
Probably not.
No. So then you take $1,250,000 and you put up a 3,000 square foot home on it, because they could on that size lot. Eliminate your lot, I mean, forget about the lot sizes, the setbacks. You put up a 3,000 square foot home. From what I understand from talking to people who are building, prices are 600 to $1,000 a square foot. So let's go down the middle, $800. Three times eight is 2,400 on top of a 1.2 million dollar lot. That's a $4 million or three and a half million dollar home. That is not what you consider employee housing or local, or no, or even local people coming to stay here or wanting to buy into Minter. That doesn't work anymore than, but if you bought that house, if you bought that lot and were able to redo it, you could make it for less than that because you're buying the houses, what's on the property also. Not that people won't do it for that. I understand that.
Anybody that you you see, I mean, you see what happens.
I see what we're doing is we're taking this lovely town of Minter and making it a place for the wealthy.
And it already is.
The 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 shared driveway thing through the center is a little tricky because if you only have 10 feet, you're gonna have, basically, if it's going through the center, that means your parking is gonna be somewhat in the rear. So it takes out a good part of your backyard and then I can tell you that you what, it's gonna be noisy. You know, if if you don't have five foot setback, potentially, you know, somebody could run into your house.
The rea- the reality is that if you have a, if if you're the owner of the property and you own 20, 2,000 square feet lot or a 10,000 square foot lot, the value of the property in Minter is per square foot. So it's just exponentially, your lot is worth, if you have an 8,000 square foot lot, it's worth whatever the going rate is for per square foot, regardless of the house on it, just the raw land is worth X amount of dollars per square foot. So if it's, if you have an 8,000 square foot lot and the going rate is $500 a square foot for the raw land, then then your lot is worth whatever that math works out to, right? And if you divide that down and you say, okay, well, I'm gonna offer a 2,500 square foot lot, that lot is gonna be less expensive than your 5,000 square foot lot. Now, is it affordable? That's a relative term.
Maybe less affordable than the 5,000.
It's it's a lot less affordable today than it was 20 years ago. We know that. But the cost of raw land in this town is what it is and it's not going down.
But it doesn't help those people who came here for their dreams, living in those homes as they want to stay because they're gonna be forced out.
How are they getting forced out?
Because they won't be able to afford the taxes.
But the taxes are based on, the taxes are based on the on the amount of land you own.
I fought this last one.
I did too.
Land I own. They said it was because of the sales and the property around me.
That's what drives up the value of your land.
That's what drives it up.
You didn't win.
But it's not going down.
Jeff, did you win? I didn't win.
I didn't win.
But if you're selling and you're giving the 5,000 foot home, wasn't, if that's worth so much more money, wouldn't that drive your taxes up more than two? Two that are, you know, half the size, that only are like 1.25 million instead of like a
That's the land, that's not the house.
But I mean, those homes would be cheaper also than that.
I mean, the rea- isn't the reality that, like, when, if and when the day comes when each owner, let's just for the sake of argument, keep going down the rabbit hole of Pine Street. When the day comes, when the old longtime owner of property on Pine Street decides that's it, the market is at a point, and I and I'm at a point in my life where I'm gonna cash in on this. I'm done, I'm gonna sell. And do they, A, do they care?
Yes, they do. I can tell you that.
Do they care what the next owner is gonna do with that? They do. Okay, so so there's, there are some people who care, which I I'm glad to know.
They're practically in tears because they're gonna have to.
Because they can't afford the taxes anymore?
Right.
But that's already the case.
No, right now, but by going down to this and increasing even more bigger sales, why can't we do something where can, how can we deed restrict it so that the price can't go up that high?
You can decide to deed restrict your house tomorrow, but it, that's just taking money out of your own pocket.
No, me selling it, but on new ones, can you deed restrict? You can do a 2,500 square foot lot, but if you deed restrict the building.
I mean, that's an incentive that y'all can build into the housing guidelines.
If you said, yeah, it's gonna be capped at a certain rent or it's gonna be capped at a, at an appreciation.
Something like that will have to be done.
It it would take a very generous person.
To then buy the lot.
To then buy the lot.
Correct.
And and that, look at, look at the people that bought in what do you call it, down by the high school in Edwards.
Our our rate was down and now we have it up, which makes it harder to build, but I understand what you're saying. If if that got passed, I I don't know how much of that is gonna be up to us, but if if somebody
But you're talking about two different things. You're talking about the way that the way that the street scape and the neighborhood feels because of its size and its density. And then on the other hand, you're talking about the cost of taxes and the cost of land. And those are two different.
No, I'm talking about the co- problems that density creates.
I think the middle. I think the middle driveway is never gonna work.
Yeah, that's not even what we're talking about.
I think the people here bought on these lots because they have that beautiful hillside behind them, the beautiful view in front of them. They have a lot which maybe they could put an ADU on, so they'd get some rent in. But they like their space. They like their piece of the street. You're not gonna have that by closing density. That's becoming a city. And if you're okay with where you move to Minter, which you love, becoming a city, that's your choice.
I feel like Minter is is dense. Like, I feel like it's a pretty dense downtown, like the majority of Minter is already dense, in my opinion. Like, it doesn't, when you drive down Main Street right now, it feels
But I think it's wrong to choose our street, which, and I'm talking from my point of view, no say. I I can't do it any other way, but I can also tell you about people who have talked to me. Picking these just few, why not pick your neighborhood too?
We're gonna talk about your neighborhood. And in my neighborhood, it's a perfect example and I'm not gonna jump ahead yet, but it, to me.
Why not talk about all neighborhoods?
Well, here's the difference. If we were taking the setbacks of how close these houses could be together, that to me is is different than changing lot size. You and I are not agreeing on the fact that, to me, if you can, if 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 I could take a, if the if the side yard setbacks on Pine Street were 10 feet and everybody that had to build had to stay 10 feet away, that means that every house is 20 feet away from each other.
I know.
Right? Right. But that is not what Pine Right, but that is not what Pine Street is.
Maybe at one point they were that way.
No, I don't know if they were, they weren't, but they're, that is not what the current code is, and that's not what's being proposed. There are no changes to the side yard setbacks being proposed to Pine Street. That to me is what drives the feeling of density on a street. And and the only reason I say that is because if somebody buys a house on Pine Street and they plow it down and they rebuild it, they're gonna build it right to the side. Cause that's the way that, that.
Not two buildings of fifty square feet that somebody might. I use as a second home, or rent it out to people all the time. Or bring more, have to have five people, I've had five people living in a house next door to me prior to Greg, prior to Drew. Because it was. A very wealthy gentleman who bought it from Vale, who had a home on Mill Creek Circle and put a. Whatever it took to put eight, four snowmobiles on, whatever the size of trailers, because he could park it there, he couldn't park in the veil. And he rented to as many people as it took, it was a flop house.
Sure.
And that's what.
And we didn't have any code enforcement, and there was no, there wasn't enough parking and all these things, but again. If someone can demonstrate that they can meet the parking and they can meet all the requirements and they can meet everything and show that it works. I just don't agree with you that a house that's forty feet wide on a fifty foot lot built to the max. To me, that feels just as bad as two small houses that are equally spaced apart, like. Yes, there's, there's two houses there, but to me, that's not more dense, because they're still just as far apart as they're supposed to be. It's very different when you take the, take a street and go, every house is have ten feet setbacks, and now we're gonna reduce them to five. That feels way different.
Small houses are gonna have to take up their entire front yard parking, which is, which if for some reason it went that way. They would have to.
You gotta park underneath it, and then you gotta go off the story before you can maybe get anything delivered.
Exactly. I mean, parks is a whole different issue, I think we should have one spot for Beth and groom, but that's not what we're talking.
We're just talking about lot size.
I disagree.
Can I turn around quickly? Um, I, I appreciate, now, I I appreciate that this is a, I mean, there, there's a lot of. Um, passion about this, and and I think that's great. What would be really helpful is if, if you have, I I mean, I'm not trying to discourage the discussion. But if you can translate that into specific comments on the proposed changes, like if you think. Setbacks are not appropriate or lot size, I I mean, I, and I wanna reemphasize that none of what's being proposed is, is even remotely set in stone at this stage. I mean, that's, that's why we're going through this whole process, is here, we're, we're throwing something out there for the community to consider and. We're gonna, we're gonna fine tune things um. Per, based on, on kind of what we hear from folks, and so. If there's, you know, if there's any way, like, if you think certain uses or or the certain lot size uh or setback standards that are proposed aren't. Aren't appropriate, I I think sort of those specific comments would be very helpful. I- i- in just in terms of kind of honing what, what's being proposed, and and if you think. Certain areas of town like Pine Street, if R one doesn't make sense. Um, I I mean, if there's other, other new zone districts that maybe are, are a better fit, I mean, we're certainly, certainly open to hearing those recommendations. Um, but i- if, you know, I, and and I, I understand that maybe getting specificity might be challenging at times. But i- if you can do that, 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 those sorts of things would be very helpful.
I think what Liz is saying is, R one, she wants five thousand put back in instead of twenty-five hundred.
Simply yes.
Okay.
I can tell you, there are multiple types of homes on Pine Street. I am lucky enough to be one in the area where I'm at, where all the setbacks are bigger than the rest of the streets. I also can tell you that I have a corner lot of probably seventy-five by a hundred that has multiple units on it and has been there forever. This is the way it was back in the days. I can tell you that across the street from me is a house that's on a seventy-five by a hundred foot, that does have five foot setbacks, two stories. Does not bother me at all, because the way it was built. It has the front, back and the sides all according to what's on here. There's so many different types, but I think dividing it and putting more houses into there only makes it denser. And it makes it a whole different type of feel than the peace and the quiet. And. Right now, on our, even that, the, the owner of the buildings that are multiple on the property. Is very good about making sure his tenants understand how that has to work, and they don't. They're not allowed to have six people in a building, et cetera. It works. It all depends on who owns the lot and who buys the lot and who rents the lot and what their regulations are to their tenants. I've been a landlord too. And I have pretty strict landlord tenant, obviously I do that. Um, and I didn't have complaints from neighbors. I didn't have cherry bombs going off at two in the morning or rock and roll music and. And fires out there at one thirty in the morning, when we're in a high fire zone district, which is what happens. And I just feel that people who have families want the feeling of good security. And I don't think that's what increasing density on Pine Street will do. And I realize we're talking maybe five, six, seven years in the future. But who knows, if we push it to the point where people can't afford their taxes, because everything, everybody goes out, it could happen overnight. So, I know, I'm not a developer, I'm not an architect. I believe that Pine Street would like to remain Pine Street, and I know that it does. I got a thank you note after the last meeting for saying this, and so it only confirmed my position. Thank you.
All right, Eric, you haven't spoke. Got anything to say down there?
I've just been listening, it's just. It's tough, I just don't know where I'm going to see Pine Street in five, ten years. One person starts selling and then they start building these huge homes, then who's not, you know what I mean, it's just gonna be a domino. Effect, it seems like.
Or you could be lucky like I am.
You could be lucky, you've been lucky for a very long time, I just don't know how long that luck's gonna hold up.
But I know three homes that have sold on Pine Street in the last. Three years.
Torn down and rebuilt?
They kept them the way they were and fixed them up.
Yes.
Because they loved Pine Street, they loved its character. I, there's two to the north of me and one to the west of me, right across the street from here. And they kept them just the way they were, and yet they paid two million some, so that even though doubled my taxes, it didn't quadruple my taxes, do you know what I mean?
I know what you mean, I just don't know how long.
And those homes look lovely, and what they did to them are lovely.
If we can preserve them historically or something like that.
I know.
That would be wonderful, but it seems like that is the trend.
But I don't, I'm not a ten- trend person, obviously.
Well, you did, the one house that, you have one property to the north of you that currently has seven water taps, so technically. If that property sold something.
To the north of me?
This side.
That's.
Right now, I'm sorry, south. Currently has seven water taps, so, seven water taps. Could make you crazy right there. Which. Which doesn't bode well. All right, I got, I, I got, I got, let's talk about the four hundred block.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, let.
No, we're not.
Oh, come on, man.
I also agree with Jeff on setbacks also, I mean, that limits the size and that limits how much open space you can.
So do we increase the side setbacks a little bit?
Well, this.
We're decreasing them.
We're decreasing them for, I mean, we're not decreasing them what's currently on Pine Street, but the Cross Creek stuff is being decreased by a ton. I mean, the setbacks are going from twenty feet. To ten feet. In the front, for, for Cross Creek. And that's huge. So, talk about the way it feels from the streetscape, if you have to have your house twenty feet or you're building twenty feet off the road. Currently, and in the future it can be ten feet, that feels pretty different, so that's a pretty big change. I personally don't have a problem with it, but. Those are things that feel, that that you feel drastically, and they allow you to build a much bigger house. Or a much bigger commercial building. Um, the, the setbacks in Cross Creek are being reduced on the side from ten feet to five feet. Which increases the way it feels quite a bit. Pine Street, currently, nothing's changing in regards to setbacks.
No, but if you were to increase those setbacks on the side, you would then.
So, so, one, sorry, one thing to keep in mind, if, if you increase setbacks from what's there today. You, there's a potential to create, a lot of homes will become non-conforming buildings. So that, that's one of the reasons why when we went through this effort.
Gotcha.
And all of a sudden, you created a guy's own, and and you would have a lot of upset people, because now you're taking away their right that they have today. To build a bigger house. Which is your intent.
No, but I understand what he says, it's the same kind of thing as taking. And dividing one into two, you know, it's the same thing in a different way, you're taking away people's dreams. If we could leave it the way it was, because that's what people bought five years ago, two years ago, twenty years ago.
Matt, let me correct you if I'm wrong, then, if I'm. If I'm kind of seeing the, through the ether, what we're talking about. Maybe. Pine Street is not, doesn't fit in R one, maybe it belongs somewhere else. Or it may, you know, and I know that this is the case. Trying to take. A lot of, you, you know, look what you said, trying to make a one-size-fits-all for a lot of areas that are. When you take a zone that's on the south end of town and say it's the same as Pine Street, which is the same as Taylor Street, it's done. And I know this is the whole act, intent of this exercise is to get away from all these character areas.
Where are you in here?
I'm R two, and and there's some pretty drastic changes to that that are, that are being proposed as well. That we can talk about when we get there, but. You know.
Well, and I guess what I'm saying is, when you read this packet, it specifically said, there are areas that are not changing.
And and Pine Street.
Could be one of those areas.
Well, it's not changing with regards to setbacks, but it is changing, is being proposed to change with regard to minimum lot size. Doesn't mean it's gonna have to happen.
No, but that's the same.
Doesn't mean, it might take fifteen, twenty years for somebody to go, you know what, I'm gonna, I'm gonna roll the dice and build a fifteen-foot house.
And all the areas in town that aren't changing are either due to annexation agreements, settlement agreements, they're PUDs. Or one hundred block we've already talked about.
Right.
Like, like this has none of those protections.
Is Taylor Street in here?
Yes, there are.
Yeah, Taylor Street, Taylor Street, I think ends up in R two.
There are two.
Which to, to, to your point.
I see, it's game free, I did read that, okay.
So I think, I think what, if you're taking all of our comments to heart and taking notes, Matt, I think. You know, generally, Lit is in opposition to have twenty-five hundred square foot lots. She would rather keep R one with five thousand square foot lots or take Pine Street out of R one and put it somewhere else.
Or leave it as five thousand square foot lots. Um, and I think you've got the accessory dwelling units in there, because it didn't have that, so you're changing that over.
But to that, but to Matt's point and to the staff's point. The direction of this is being guided by the community plan, the community and a lot of other surveys, and this is the only area in town. The R one zone is the only area that's being proposed to allow twenty-five hundred square foot lots. And that was a whole exercise that came out of a lot of work to say that there are some places in town. That you should be able to. Build a smaller house and own a smaller lot, because that's the way it used to be. And.
And it's a recommending document.
It's a recommending document, but if we're not, if we're just gonna go, well, thank you for your recommendation, and we don't wanna do that anywhere, and we wanna keep everything big. And the way that it was, I, I don't, I don't really get it.
You know, and that, let's not go any further than that, because I could get into real, real rabbit hole.
I know. So, I think, have you had enough information from us on R one, can we move to R two?
Y- yeah, um, I mean, is there?
I have a R one question, I'm sorry.
Yeah, can I, can I just finish quickly?
I have some news for a second, I'm sorry.
So, um, yeah, I mean, so the, a couple, just a couple of quick comments. Um, a- again, yes, we're, a lot of this is rooted in the community plan, which I understand is, is a, you know, it's a visioning document. Or guiding document with recommendations and policies. It, you know, it, it, I, and I know it's, it's often sold that way, um. But typically, when you're proposing zoning changes, those need to be rooted in a community plan or a comprehensive plan. Like, if you're gonna rezone your property, you have to demonstrate that your property, your, your change in zoning complies with the com- the community plan. Um, be, because otherwise, it's kind of like, well, you know. There, there's no justification for what you're trying to do, and that's, that's why from my, my perspective, it's really important that we, we try to. Uh, adhere to what's in the community plan as best as possible, it doesn't mean that, that's a, you know, it's a strict rule that you, you can't break that rule. So there, there is flexibility, but there, there needs to be, i- from my perspective, it really, i- as best we can, it needs to be rooted in the community plan. And and I wasn't involved with that, you know, ideally, there was a, a lot of community input, and that, that's the recommendations that emerge from what the community wants. For the future Minter. Um, I, you know, I, I don't know, I wasn't involved with that. Um, so my, my other, yep.
Um, I was involved with it, and I was involved in two community plans prior to that.
Okay.
Plans, we called them back then.
Uh, right, there's various terminology.
Sizes never came up, but.
Okay, well, and that could have been a recommendation of the, the consultants. Um, I, I, again, I don't know, I'd have to have a discussion with Scott and Madison about that to kind of better understand where that came from. Um, the, the other piece to this, um, you know, it. One of the, the overarching objectives of the code update was to try and consolidate as best we can. Existing zone districts. That said, I, I, there's definitely some challenging, challenges with doing that. Um, so if there are sort of these critical areas of town that makes sense to have a, a unique zone district for. I, I think if that's a recommendation, that can certainly be made. Um, it, it, it kind of goes in the opposite direction from validation, but if it, if it's really critical. Um, you know, it's, the planning commission certainly has the purview to make that recommendation. Um, so, tha- that was kind of, those are kind of my just quick comments, um, and and happy to answer any questions that. You have regarding R one.
I, I had a question on R one. And, and maybe it's just because I'm half blind, blind and my brain's cooked. But in these little packets. In these little packets that we got at the first meeting, in the little packets we got at the first meeting. It, it looks like. And I'll ask Madison to pull it up. Can we put one thirty, one thirty? One thirty-three? Up on the uh. The big map, Madison?
Sure.
Page one thirty-three up, because, and I could be looking at it wrong, but it looks to me like. Some of the zoning already changed on the four hundred block from what was proposed originally at the first meeting.
No, no zoning has changed.
No, nothing has changed, the map colors have changed. What was being proposed? What was proposed, looks like residential was proposed and then kicked back to mixed use and some residential. Which I could be wrong.
No, the four hundred block of Pine Street.
No, I'm not talking about Pine, I'm talking about, we're talking about R one.
Yes.
And, and the four hundred block of the River Houses, in the four hundred block, we're getting changed from mixed use to R one.
No, mixed use three, that's what's being proposed.
Are you going for mixed use?
Old Town Mixed Use, the four hundred block is being.
Pro- pro- proposed zoning in this packet from the original thing ha- has, has uh.
Are you sure you're not looking at five hundred block?
Where are you looking?
I don't, F nine. R one is here, so, where am I?
This is the hillside.
Okay.
This is not even shown on this map, there is no color to this, this becomes MU three.
And that's what was proposed from the beginning?
That was what was proposed in the beginning.
Where's my map, Madison?
That, there, there's your map.
This is my map?
There's your map.
This is my map, proposed, proposed.
MU three.
Proposed, okay. Proposed, okay. Don't go anywhere. You're very helpful. Come back here for a minute. I'm sorry. MU three. And then this one. This.
Doesn't show any.
This is R one.
And that's MU three.
Yeah, but currently it's.
Currently it's Old Town Residential.
Correct. And this is the one that we've had a bunch of comments regarding five twelve to five sixty-two on and.
And we've had comments on the whole four hundred block of Eagle River Street, Marshall. People don't like that it's being proposed as mixed use.
People don't like that it's being changed from current mixed use to.
No, people don't like that it's allowed in commercial at all.
I don't.
I I have comments in the packet showing that. You can't, you can't tell me.
I know that the the people that live here, here, here. And potentially here definitely don't like it because they say that you're taking away property rights and there's some term for it.
Don't use it.
I don't know what it is.
Nobody's taking it.
You still have perfectly reasonable use of your property.
Yeah, but I've always said that we're getting down the zone there.
I know you are.
Downzone there. I know you are. I know you are. We can talk to that about that. We get to that point. I don't know if that's gonna be today, but.
Probably not the right yellow you're going.
Right.
Okay, one thirty-three you said?
I think you cleared it up.
Okay.
Right? You you the one thirty-three pages of the map?
Probably. Right, it's really hard. You can't see that damn thing without.
It's really tough. There's a lot of colors and some of them are real close.
They're super close.
It it works better if you just use.
A magnifying glass?
No, it works better, honestly, if you just use what's in the packet of. For each zone district where up at the top it shows.
These individual ones.
The existing zone districts are being consolidated into and what their current permitted uses are, et cetera. And, you know, for instance, you are, I would assume. You're in the what?
Old Town Mixed Use.
That's where you currently live?
Correct.
Right, and so it says real clearly, you know, what is. What is per- what is allowed in that zone now and what is gonna be allowed? What is being proposed to be allowed in the future and what the dimensional changes, if any, are there. But we'll get there in a minute. I think if we can get past R one.
Oh, that's what I thought you were looking.
He's on MU three.
Oh, he's gone to mixed use, okay.
I just couldn't see the map and I thought that the map, I thought I was reading the map that. Not my specific property property, but other properties on the four hundred block Eagle River Street. That that was getting changed.
River, Madison's talking about Maine, were you?
No, R one. I thought it was getting changed to R one and I was looking at the map wrong. And that's where I was talking about.
Only, the only three areas that are in R one are Cross Creek. Cross Creek Residential, South, not North. And the Old Town. Residential, which for all intent purposes is Pine Street.
I apologize for being wrong.
And Matt?
I'm sure you're used to it.
If for some reason Pine Street needs to become its own zone. Maybe that is a future discussion, but I think we obviously have some.
They are trying to consolidate.
I know, but but again, like we're, that's why we're having the discussion. And, you know, sadly, no one's here from the public to talk. Um, but they've come, some people have come to meetings and there's a lot of comments that have been included in the packet. And. Um, you know, where it goes from here, I'm not sure, but I think personally. Um. I think that I'm okay with for R one, just to be concise, I'm okay with. The increased lot coverage and impervious numbers going from. Whatever they were in each zone up to fifty and sixty percent respectively. Um, I'm okay with the setbacks being reduced from twenty feet to ten feet in the front. As it applies to the Cross Creek areas and from ten to five also for the Cross Creek areas, there's no change to the setbacks being proposed. Yeah, as it relates to the Old Town Character Area. And I personally don't have a problem with the minimum lot size proposed. Lynn does, and I think it should be noted.
Problem with the minimum lot size. I do not have a problem with the setbacks as stated. I do not have a problem with the building lot coverage increasing five percent each. Which is allowing a bigger home on that property. Um, stream setbacks don't relate. I have no problem with the twenty-eight feet. I do think that if we remain at five thousand square feet for. Or we can add into the Old Town Character Area to make sh- well, it does say that in the new one. That it's single family homes and accessory dwelling units. I don't know that Pine Street duplexes would work. Home occupation already is there, family childcare is already there, parks and playgrounds aren't there, but we have the gardens. Short-term rentals are already there. We have the church there. So I don't know where that fits into that, but it's not going anywhere. Anybody else?
No.
Nope. Is that good enough, Matt?
Yes, that's great. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments related to R one?
The only comment, I got one more comment related, and this is a general comment that is for every zone district on this discussion tonight. I don't know why, and I wish Scott was here so I could ask him, but. Um, there is a provision in every zone being proposed. That limited review uses can be approved by the planning director.
That already exists.
It already exists. I don't know why, given the broader scope of what things. S- in some zones, there are some pretty serious new uses that can can happen under limited use. Like a restaurant or like a drive-through or. Um, those don't seem like uses to me that should go under the radar. Like all of a sudden, a restaurant can pop up next door to you and you didn't know about it or. Um, there there's no public process for that. So we can discuss each one of those when it gets to there. It doesn't necessarily. Um, you know, what's being proposed in R one doesn't really bug me because it's just an accessory building or an alternative energy production. Which I would assume is a solar panel for your roof or. A windmill in your backyard or something, but those, that doesn't affect R one too much. It it starts to become a little more impactful in the mixed use zone, so I'm done talking.
Mine, i- in regards to what Jeff is saying, my one thing is membership organization. And I noticed you put that in the definitions and we'll probably be talking about that down the line a bit. Bed and breakfast possibly, but the rest of it I think is already there, so.
That's unconditional use and that goes in front of council.
I'm looking at R one.
Well, it's it's still in R one. Center, home business, membership. Those are not things that can be approved by the planning director. Those go to council.
Yeah.
So I think we're, can we go to R two?
I have one more thing with us.
Correct.
Sorry, um, we just had the whole variance about dimensions and we didn't know if that was width or whatever. Here it says lot dimensions, the minimum are a hundred feet, fifty feet. What's the definition of that then?
There is one.
Uh, so that's what was in my staff report as lot width. Um, definition for the variance, so the definition for that is the average distance between the medians of the two side lot lines. Measured perpendicularly from one of the sides. Um, so yeah, because it's uh stupid, for lack of a better term, that's why we've uh uh proposed to get rid of that.
Get rid of the.
Lot.
The word dimension.
And get and instead just require twenty foot.
Just that whole part of the table will not exist. Mortal say N A, I don't know.
No, we'll we'll change it to lot frontage on a right of way or however we end up with, nothing because you aren't super thrilled with the.
Well, yeah, I just think if it's gonna be, if it's gonna say N A in every zone.
Oh, yes.
Then it should just not even.
Yeah, gets rid of.
No, I read what you wrote, Matt, is what you said, and I was like. Yeah, I don't even know what that means. N A's good. I was like, wait, what's that mean?
R two.
So, uh, just quickly, I wanted to just offer a little bit of clarification on limited review uses. So they are a use. That um it is reviewed and uh decided on by the planning director and that, as Madison noted, that's how it's set up in the in the code today. Limited review uses and and we'll be bringing you standards for those, uh, hopefully here in the next month or so. But the the limited review uses, the idea is that those have standard above and beyond kind of what's typical that. Um, that i- is standard for, like I say, a use by right. Um, and and the reason for that is that in certain cases, those, you know, deserve, maybe deserve a little bit more scrutiny. Uh, maybe not to the the a level of a conditional use, but um that there's some other standards that. Um, need to apply and and so that's kind of, that process is set up to ensure that or allow the planning director to. To look at what's being proposed and make sure that it complies with those standards. Um, and then and that's kind of how that process is structured. That made any sense?
So, for example, um, drive-throughs. Uh, and please do not hold me to this, we're still working out use standards. But something that Scott and Matt and I discussed yesterday at our weekly meeting. Um, a standard was, uh. Time, lent, uh, not operating hours. So that a speaker wouldn't be going off, you know, in the middle of the night, potentially next to a residential unit, things like that. But obviously you can't put, I I think it starts infringing on uh rights. You can't put operating hours for every single business in the code, but for those more intensive, more.
Chopping up.
Right, uh, the the uses that have more impact and are labeled limited use. Um, and then even higher impact, conditional use. We, as long as we build it into our code, we can say, okay, you know, for the daycare, please provide us a queuing plan. For drop-off pickup. Um, whereas if that was just a use by right, they could go into pretty much any building that they wanted. And and they're good to go.
And impact the neighbors.
Right.
Accordingly.
So this allows us a higher level of scrutiny. You can't just, and obviously if they're building a new structure. The structure would still have to come to y'all for DRB. They they can't build something, they can't bypass it with a limited use review process. But the use itself. Just has additional standards imposed on it that we don't typically impose on uses by right.
Right.
Because those are deemed appropriate in any portion of the zone district, whereas a limited use might not. I think Scott told me that the next door to Town Hall used to be a chiropractor that operated under. A limited use and um we don't know. That was before record keeping really got decent, um, but presumably he had hours of operation. He had, you know, um, maximum number of clients potentially that he could see in a day based on his parking, things like that.
Makes sense.
R two. R two, or D two, R two, D two?
Yes.
Matt? Matt?
Oh, the one's driving.
Yeah. I I don't have, um, I guess just for a little context, R two is, um. It applies to primarily South Town and uh Cross Creek North. Uh, what's Cross Creek North today? And and the Game Creek area, yes.
And Taylor Street.
Well, that's Game Creek.
Down the enclave.
Yeah.
Okay, in the enclave. Okay, so I'm just for the sake of keeping it spicy, I'm gonna go first. Because.
Spicy.
Well, this is, this is goes to our discussion about density. So South Town, the two Alcatates where I live. It was, that entire parcel of land was purchased by. Probably six, five or six owners together who purchased the property thirty, forty years ago. And they they all got together, they were all friends, and the deal that they had when they bought the land from the owner, it was one owner that owned the whole thing. The Hoagland family. When they bought it, the Hoagland family said, and they subdivided it, and the the deal was you have to put. A structure on your lot within the first year, so they all put trailers on it till they could afford to build a house. I don't even think to this day that it's been applied correctly. I think it's one of those. There's a word for it that you, Jeff Spanell, has that's, it's, it's, all the I's weren't quite dotted and all the T's weren't.
It wouldn't surprise me.
Right, so either way, but this the zoning for that is is included in R two. To your point about Pine Street, it has ten-foot setbacks. Side yard setbacks, so every house down there can be no closer to each other than twenty feet.
Right.
Right? So Darrell's house, Mike Martinez's house, old postmaster Jimmy's house.
Right.
OJ and Linda's house.
What was the gentleman that's in front of you on the log cabin?
Ernie and Laura.
Ernie, yeah.
Right, so and and the big log house on the corner, so and and my house. All those houses have a ten-foot side yard setback. What's being proposed in R two is to go down to five feet. So. If you were to plow all those houses down and squeeze them all ten feet closer to each other to get more houses in. Wouldn't that feel pretty different?
How do you feel about that zoning change?
That's that's my point. That. When your houses are twenty feet apart or ten feet apart, it's a big difference. When your houses are five feet apart and five, or ten feet apart and ten feet apart like they are now. That's the current zoning on Pine Street. Doesn't matter whether there's three of them or four of them or five of them. They can be no closer than ten feet. But what's being proposed down in my town is to reduce that by ten full feet. That's a big difference.
On each side?
I'm, no, totally. So if it's, if it's going from ten feet. If the side yard setback is currently ten feet and it's being reduced to five feet.
Oh, so you're ten feet, I got you.
So that means that's a twenty feet in between each house. If it's a five yard setback, the max is ten feet between each house. For the minimum, it is ten feet. And so I don't, I don't know, I'm pretty sure, my computer died. But I'm pretty sure that up on Taylor Street, the current zoning on Taylor Street is five, five foot side yard setback. So that's not gonna feel any different on Taylor Street. You're gonna be no closer than ten feet away from your neighbor. No matter what gets built, whether it's a gigantic house or a teeny little house, they have the right to build a setback. So to me, this is a, this is a challenging one because. If you're taking Taylor Street and South Town, which are two completely different. Different, you know, feels, characters, whatever you want to call it. And and the the Dar- Darrell was sitting here, he'd have a story about it. But the fact is that those five owners, you know, I I wasn't there when they all did that. I I reap the benefit of buying a lot in nineteen ninety-eight that just happened to be like the last crumb on the table. And Betty Hoagland, her little white house, she passed away and one of their sons owned it. They're from New York or whatever and they come out only in the summer. That's the only, that was, I think, the first house that was there. When Darrell and all of them bought. But they decided when they subdivided that to make basically. The the setbacks what they are and give that neighborhood, I mean, it's called Two Alcatates for, that's what they decided to call it. And. It feels the way it feels because of the ten, the ten foot, just like you're saying Pine Street feels. It has a feel to it. If, if the that zoning changes and Darrell and everybody sells and they plow all those houses down. And everybody builds a lot closer together, there's probably gonna be three, four more houses down there, right?
Right.
So it's gonna. So it's gonna feel different, it's not gonna feel the same anymore, so that, that will drastically change the character.
So Taylor Street, Pine Street currently are five foot, correct?
You happen to live in an area that has not been maxed out because of. It's exactly what I'm talking about, but. You currently are, are sitting in a place today, the zoning didn't change, and your neighbors on both sides sold. They're gonna build, I can almost guarantee you that the next person that buys it's gonna build right to the setback. Because it's gonna maximize their dollar and their investment, they're not gonna go, you know what, I'm gonna build a tiny house there so I can have a big lawn. Cause it's not gonna pay in the end, it's gonna pay them in the end, their investment is gonna max, is to maximize what they can do on their lot. And you see it all up and down Main Street, so.
So, Matt, Jeff has a legitimate concern. What's it called down there, South Estates?
It's called Two Alka States, and, and my point is that, that, this is a perfect example of what the, the new zoning. Definitely does not match the current character of that in the town, and it's about as far. South of town as, as you can get, and uh, I don't know that it fits. The, the change in the side yard setbacks going from ten to five feet would, would be a drastic change to the neighborhood. And uh, I'm, I'm fine with the increased lot coverage from forty-five or whatever it is to up to fifty and sixty percent. Uh, respectively, but I think that personally, the uh, and I've heard from my neighbors down there too. The, the change of going from ten to five feet would be a drastic change to the character of that neighborhood, I don't think it's, it's, it's no change to Taylor Street. So I don't think it really affects them, and the, the lot size doesn't change, it's still a five thousand square foot minimum. So, that's my two cents on that.
Okay, um, and, and just to offer a little bit of context, the reason the side yard setback was reduced, and if you look at the. The, the poster for R two, you can see that there's what, five different existing zone districts being consolidated in the. The minimum set, side yard setback, the lowest is five feet, and so that, that's the reason why. Um, a- again, this is one of the challenges with consolidating existing zone districts into a, a new zone district is. Um, try, and, and not trying to increase setbacks or reduce building heights and things like that to, to cause non-conformities. Um, that, that's kind of where that came from as well, if we, if we change R two to have a minimum side yard of ten feet. Then these other places where it's currently five, it's gonna create problems, I, I do hear the flip side of that as well. In places where it's ten feet now and reducing it to five is, is also gonna change things, so.
Well, and again, I'm not trying to sit here and be a hypocrite, I, I would put my money where my mouth is, and I'd say that if you were proposing to do. Twenty-five hundred square foot lots in R two, I would be all for it, because I, I still feel like. I still feel like if my neighbor was ten feet away from me, or twenty feet away from me. I don't care if it's a small house or a giant house, he's still twenty feet away from me. And I don't care if there's another house twenty feet away from him, it's the width of the, in between the houses to me that makes density feel the way that it feels. And height, but if everything can be twenty-eight feet high, and everything is limited as to how close it can be to each other. I could care less whether there's five people or ten people living in it, if they have the parking and if everything works, and they can afford it, then great. Setbacks, I look at, not lot size.
So would the recommendation be to look at carving out, uh, that, and I think that's Cross Creek North, unless I'm wrong?
Yeah, Cross Creek North, the character of Cross Creek North, I think is in, in grave jeopardy of, of changing. The character of it drastically, if you take, and you reduce the side, the side yard setback from ten to five.
Would the recommendation be to keep that area as a separate zone district, or, or look to another?
I'm not, uh, that's, that's for you guys to decide, I, I just think this is one of those. Pine Street, I think that area, there are certain areas in town where that kind of a drastic change. Changes the character to a point where it, it really makes a giant impact, and, and the one-size-fits-all. Doesn't work. If, I, I understand the intention, but I, I'm just putting it on the record that it is a drastic change to the character. It would be a drastic change to the character, would it ever happen? I don't know, I mean, you're only talking about. Six, seven lots down there, and if and when the day comes when any of these guys sell. I don't, I don't see any deep people plowing those houses down per se, other than maybe the Hoagland house, which is probably seventy-five years old. But.
They're sweet lots down there.
They're, they're very nice lots, and, but the lots, but, but the, the lot size is not what's changing. The, the minimum lot size is remaining the same. It's going from, in that area it is, correct, that's also a pretty drastic change.
Cross Creek North area, yeah.
Cross Creek North, that's. I do know.
I don't think any of those actually conform to the ten thousand.
No, they don't, I don't think they ever did.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Betty Hoagland's lot might, it's the biggest one, and that's the one that. There's basically a vacant lot next to it between Mike Martinez's and Betty Hoagland's house, and Mike mows the lawn. That might be the only lot that's ten thousand down there.
So there's an open lot still available?
No, it's, it's just, it's just her giant lot, a very small house. He lives next door to that, he lives two doors technically down from me.
I thought Mike lived on Mountain Drive.
Yeah, that's where I thought he lived, so.
Mike Martinez, the old teacher.
You're talking about employing Mike, yes.
Yeah, Mike is younger Mike. Mike lives next door to OJ and Linda.
Oh, Jimmy Madril's house, I've been at.
No, Mike lives right next to.
I could promise you if I tore that down, I'd be right up next to you, Jeff. I'd take that extra five feet.
I know. Jimmy's house is the smallest one down there.
And that was the point.
But Mike and Darrell live next door to each other.
Yeah, I understand, yeah. Okay, so we're not gonna change any zone districts, and moving on.
They're pretty adequate the way they are, don't you think?
Well, we might get through this faster.
Do you have anything on R two, Eric?
Can we jump that? Can we jump, can we jump it?
Yeah, yours is the last one.
R three.
R three, there's nothing changed.
I would suggest taking Robert Creek, or, it's not labeled, but I know who made the comment, the comment about the setbacks. Uh, not working for seven sixty-one main. Um, given that a, I think a, whatever setbacks proposed, front setbacks proposed, makes that lot unusable. So I would. Hope that y'all would recommend us to change that.
That the lot across the bridge there?
The lots that they have to drive through to get up.
That lot doesn't make a lot of sense to be in that zone, I mean, personally, I don't, I, I think that whole zone is dumb. I think that, even though those are big pieces of land, it would be, it would obviously be nice if everybody could subdivide them into smaller pieces. Why to preserve, there's only, there's only like two large lots there.
Right across from Cemetery Bridge? Twenty-five footers, that's where they go?
Well, I mean. The Medina property on the hill where the, where the. Water tank sits, is probably, how many acres?
That is nine point eight acres, I think.
And, and you can't, and, and because of the zoning, you can only subdivide it into two acre parcels, I think, right? So nothing less than two acres. And he doesn't intend on doing that.
What were you talking about, the?
Below that, where the trailers are, where Arvin lives, there's.
That's where the trailers are, that's what I was thinking.
Right, and he's removed a couple of them, but Arvin lives there still, and that is also in. R three.
And once it downfalls.
Called estate, currently it's called estate zone. Well, it looks long and skinny, but their property is way up the hill.
What, what were you recommending on that?
Completely unusable.
Martin Creek, which is what this.
Specific property we're talking about, right?
Across from the bridge.
Where the trailers are. That is part of Martin Creek now, and so that just kind of got moved over to R three because Martin Creek just turned into R three, nothing else got added to that. But part of that is there's a forty-foot front setback, however, that lot's only like a hundred feet deep, it's the same. So, and then you have twenty-foot rear setback, so you've got a twenty-foot strip of land that you can use in that, that property. So, we would hope that you would recommend uh, lessening the setbacks, given the size of the property and the fact that they can't build more than. Two units, three max on the property, that lessening setbacks would be okay.
How many legal lots are there now?
Yeah, how many other people are affected by that?
No, there's four legal, four lots, and what's the current setback?
Let's see, there's your lot, there's Frank Medina's lot. There's one below.
But the majority of the one below is the one we're talking about, and the majority of that lot is virtually unusable because it's up the cliff and.
Then Ella's, isn't it?
But right now, any, 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 well, two things, right now, any, where in the near future. Not build much with two taps, if you have one, you're adding one. And, and, and then secondly, what is the current setback currently on that?
Forty feet front, twenty feet side. Yes.
Currently forty?
Yeah, we didn't really change, recommend much change to this zone district, we did to uses, but not to the dimensional limitations.
Yeah, there's no changes to that dimension.
Is it forty up on you too?
Forty up on the hill.
Yeah, where his sister's lot is.
From the front.
Yes, but that makes the front lot unusable, essentially. And given the limitation of the uses, you have a duplex with. Maybe an accessory dwelling unit, I mean, we're talking three units on a lot max, that's already minimum two acre size.
The only one that really affects is the lower one we're talking about, specific sort, the, the one, the trailers. They're not conforming, and it's currently a forty-foot. Front yard setback, and, and. And the other people, the other, it's got like sixty to the hill, right?
Something like that, maybe.
Forty-foot front setback, and the forty-foot isn't affecting anybody else in that area, just that specific property.
The forty-foot is applied to every property within that zone district, it just most adversely affects the one in the front.
Yeah, there's, there's.
There's four lots within Martin Creek, there's his sister's lot.
But didn't they buy it with the forty-foot, Madison? They bought the property and the forty-foot was currently there.
Carter's have owned that property for generations, I thought.
Oh, it's always been forty.
Yeah, well, it's been in the family, they, it changed hands to.
Arvin Carter sold it to Rosa's daughter, yes, which is his niece.
Is this the property that fronts on Highway twenty-four? I, I mean, it might make sense just looking at the context, I mean, it. Um, on one side you have, I think, mixed use three, and then R two on the, on the other side in the proposed zoning map. I, I mean, it may make sense for that to be R two.
It, it, I would make the recommendation that it should not be R three.
So it's R two, eh, eh, but that would turn your sisters and everybody to R two.
No.
It would only turn those, those lower ones that are, the property that's front on Main Street.
Just that specific, and what, what's the setback on R two, Matt?
I think it's twenty feet front setback.
Well, it's being proposed to go down.
It's twenty feet front, five foot side, and ten foot rear.
It was less than twenty, I'd be like, that's a little close to the road.
No, I think twenty is still.
I think, I think Tom Sullivan's old, his sister's old house up the street, like, oh, five houses or six houses up. That's not forty, right?
No, cause it's not in the zone district.
And that, but that zone district is being proposed to be R two as well, is that correct, or no? I don't know, I can't.
Six houses north?
The blue house up there, you know what I'm talking about, Matt, Jeff, you can tell it. Main Street. The old blue house, that Tommy's sister lived, Tommy and that sister lived in before they bought the house.
Yeah, but it's on Main Street on like the six hundred block?
Yeah.
Okay, then that's, that's.
Past the trailers.
Past the trailers.
Going south.
So it's in South Town.
It's here.
Okay, that's proposed to be R two.
So we might as well make that match, right?
Right, the only caveat to that, and I'm not saying it's a bad thing, I'm just trying to make you aware of it. Martin Creek slash R three has a minimum lot size of two acres. R two has minimum lot size of five thousand square feet.
Why don't we, and do they have five thousand square foot on the bottom?
Yeah, it's a.
So if he's got five thousand, why don't we just, why don't we just make the bottom from Cemetery Bridge? And continue R two up to match the other one?
You could just extend this zoning.
Down to R two. Yeah.
Or, or extend this zoning that way.
It's a good idea.
So, are, are you guys talking about getting rid of R three?
No, we're just changing the Carter lot to R two.
And all the way up to the other R two towards the south.
I'm actually surprised that they're not here.
From, from, from Cemetery Bridge, Matt, up to wherever your other R two. Ended to the south, just making a continuous R two to the south.
Okay, I got it.
All right, there we go, we're making progress.
You're making progress.
Moving on.
Marketplace.
Makerspace.
Makerspace.
Makerspace, I always say marketplace, oh, it is the marketplace, makers market.
There's, there's no proposed changes to the dimensional standards of Makerspace block. There's already a ton of work that's been put into the hundred block, this is essentially just the hundred block.
No, the Makerspace is Cross Creek. No, Makerspace is, is Meadow, Meadowmont Business Park.
Oh, it's way down there.
Where is it?
It's the Meadowmont.
It's smaller, you come into town, the second one.
Oh, I did the roof, I know where that is.
You did the roof.
That's just Makerspace, that area?
That area is just.
And the landscaping guy gets in on the Makerspace?
Yes.
Well, now he has gas, all he needs is.
What happens to the Dutch on move?
That whole area is, is Maker.
But there are no proposed changes to the dimensional standards, other than, no lot dimension.
Lot area five thousand square.
It was at the Italian Market, it doesn't fit in there, right?
There's no lot dimension anymore, they used to be a fifty-foot lot dimension.
So when we went through and put uses together, we also consolidated a lot of uses into things, so, you know, barber shop, beauty shop. That kind of stuff went into professional services, uh, retail ended up covering grocery stores, pawn shops, uh. Things that would, like, that whole long list would be hard to fit in this table. Yes, so that will be something that needs to be updated, but we are operating under the assumption that retail will cover grocery.
Okay, yeah, cause I, we live in a food desert, we feel like a lot of these.
Absolutely.
Have to have some kind of food.
One of the um, limited use, no, conditional uses, adult businesses.
That's a first amendment right, we have to allow it somewhere.
But, do we have to have this in the definition? Nude entertainment establishment?
No, they banned that, I tried to open one of those.
That's what's an existing definition, we'd have to talk with you.
I, you know, adult bookstore, cabaret, massage parlor, motion pictures inside, but nude entertainment in winter?
Well, no, just because we might update the definition. Well, no, just because we might update the definition doesn't, like, adult business.
Oh, no, I know that, I know that, I'm just saying, that's since we got the definitions and I was checking back and forth and I saw that.
Yes, it's a first amendment right to have access to that kind of stuff, apparently, so we have to allow it somewhere, we can't zone it out of existence.
What do you think the hotel across the street from the saloon used to be before the Minter?
You mean at Old Dog's Place?
I mean, back in eighteen hundreds, it was it was going longer.
I don't know, I had a two hundred con- hour conversation with Ella Burnett, I didn't hear about that.
We're talking twenty years ago now.
I know. Matt, you were gonna say something?
Yeah, so it's it's been, and we we need to confirm this with the town attorney, but it's it's always been my understanding that you can't. Communities can't flat out prohibit those uh types of uses, that they, you can you can make them a conditional use and you can have. Most most communities I've worked in have like pages and pages of standards for those sorts of things, so. Uh, doing one is is extremely challenging, and then I think you have to get licensed through the state, and I mean, that's why. They don't really exist in western Colorado, um. So, but I I don't think you're allowed to just prohibit them because it it my understanding has been it's a it's a. Protected under the first amendment, so. Uh, that that's why we put that in there, it's something we have to confirm with the town attorney. Uh, it just seemed like this part of Minter um would make if one were to go in. Uh hypothetically, that that is where it would be appropriate, it it just didn't seem like anywhere, any other of the other zone districts it would be appropriate in.
I'm sure with their code enforcement, it would be really easy to uphold some standards at an adult business here in Minter.
All right.
I'm not gonna talk again when you said that.
Thank you, Matt, moving on.
My wife loves it when I use sarcasm.
My wife says I'm not funny.
Any other comments on Makerspace?
No.
I I will note, one of the other changes that we've made, and again, this is a a again, my understanding as a as a non attorney. Um, so the state recently passed, well, it was actually, I think, a ballot initiative a number of years ago that legalized. Uh, for lack of a better term, magic mushrooms, they're they're called natural medicine.
Yep.
And so communities now have to, again, you can't prohibit those, you have to. Allow those in in somewhere in town, and so the the different types of natural medicine businesses that. Are are regulated under the s- by the state, um, those are included here um in the Makerspace, again. That seems like the most appropriate zone district to allow those sorts of uses.
We we prohibited marijuana, marijuana, actually, we all voted for it, but it got prohibited at the end.
We don't prohibit marijuana use, just the sale.
Correct.
And we can't do that for the psilocybin.
Oh, we can, we can prohibit marijuana sales, but we can't prohibit mushrooms because of the fact that they're medicine?
It's it's how the legislation is structured, I think, again, I I I'm not gonna pretend to be an attorney here, but that that's. Uh, cuz I just did this, I worked for the town of Debeck and a a number of communities, because I I think the. The regu- the state just passed their regulations earlier this year, and so a lot of communities are are kind of jumping. Uh, having to to catch up and and input or uh change their zoning regulations to allow for these things. Uh, but I think marijuana, you can still, that like, the marijuana business is like a dispensary, things like that, you're. Uh, I think you're still allowed to prohibit.
Yes, uh and as a heads up, we will be bringing ordinance to stopgap. Uh, the zoning of natural medicine uh for the next, you know, six months, put it in a zone district. Until we adopt the updated code, because we have to have regulations on that.
Makes sense.
Are we on MU one?
Uh, mushrooms.
Along with chicken coops.
We've got probably chicken coops here. All right, good, thanks, moving on to mixed use one.
Who wants to talk?
I'm I'm not in that one. I have to wait till three, apparently, to talk.
Yes, you do.
Can we skip to mixed use three?
No. I think we can get through M one two pretty quick, quickly, frankly.
Hope so.
Yeah, they look good to me.
It's not helpful, Michael.
I just wanna say, like, like I was saying before, the limited use, it in M U one, one of limited uses is a restaurant. And I just feel like that would be, Madison's point, there would obviously be a lot of extra. Language about that, but um it seems like a use, a restaurant seems like a use. That should go in front of a public process and not just be decided by the plan.
It makes you swan, you're talking about, Tom?
So I I question whether or not a limited, that should be a limited use, or a restaurant should be. Maybe a restaurant should be a conditional use, or why does the town planner, why why do we want? That kind of liability? Uh, the town planner to make those kinds of decisions of like, and not.
Madison, is there any chance you can throw a mixed use one up on the screen?
Sure, uh, do you want the map or the table?
I'm.
The big map, maybe.
Big map, okay.
So we can see where mixed use one is being.
I can do that.
The uh, I'm okay with the lot and the impervious percentages, fifty and sixty. For residential and eighty and ninety for commercial, that's still, I think, pretty common with mixed uses, those high numbers for. Lot coverage and and impervious, so I'm just, I'm fine with that, and I'm okay with the setbacks. Being ten front, ten rear and five side, I'm okay with the height, twenty eight for residential and thirty five for commercial.
So it's this light pink, Michael, on the main street, um, from the two hundred to the four hundred block, and then. Uh, across the Bell and Bridge into the rail yard.
So in the rail yard.
We're aware that that's a pipe dream, but it was based off of previous.
Saying it's these?
The two hundred block down to the four hundred block, this light pink.
Oh, yeah, like so from the church house, that next, the church house sort of across from me, from Kirby's.
To Darren to Hokies.
To Darren to Hokies' house.
Yeah.
That's M U one.
That's M U one, it is.
And it's current.
It's currently mixed use.
Yeah.
And and Old Town Commercial, there's like six lots that fall in Old Town Commercial.
Yeah, but it's not a giant change to that, so.
No, I don't believe so.
It's more of a change on the three hundred block, probably.
Well, that's still zoned, it's mixed use now, so it's not a change in zoning, but.
Uses.
Just not being used that way.
Yeah, right.
You know how they decide, how they currently are like that, all right.
Put a strip drive in there? Actually, we just make sure that small retail stores will have some kind of food, like.
Yes.
That will have what?
That will offer some kind of organic food, I mean, that could be part of retail stores, since we have nothing in this area. You know, any meat, butcher, stuff like that.
I I think that, I think like, I think that, I don't know. How much, uh, you know, I think that the intent of that was to eventually, over time. Have more businesses on Main Street, at the same time, we're definitely gonna need parking meters. But, you know, we can make some revenue off those, cuz if you can't park, you can't buy stuff. People love it, I say that.
Yeah, it's true.
It's true.
Lynn? Got new M U one comments?
I uh have been going through this. Residential facilities, I don't, I just think that, like you said, Jeff, when the changes come. It needs to come before us, if it is on a business in a limited conditional use situation.
Oh, you missed it, Lynn, it's down to twenty five hundred square feet again.
So why isn't that showing, is that, that's not Old Town Residential?
No, it's Old Town Mixed Use, so. Because the Old Town Commercial Zone is currently zoned for twenty five hundred square feet, so we didn't want to. We wanted to.
Old Town Care to Commercial Zone, which is downtown.
Right.
Old Town Mixed Use is what we're talking about.
Perfect example of of why.
Right here, Old Town Mixed Use.
If you required, for instance.
Yeah, but Old Town Commercial isn't, it's twenty five hundred.
Yeah, but Old Town Commercial, this is Old Town Mixed Use.
Yeah, no, M U one covers both Old Town Commercial and Old Town Mixed Use.
Right, yeah, so it's both, so this. So what, so, I'm sorry, we're starting trouble, so is the all, so basically. We're gonna reduce it up to Kirby's to twenty five hundred. Like I tell my kids, it's yes or no answer.
People can.
Yes.
Again, you're, I feel like.
Only if you have a business.
I feel like if y'all are.
Not a residential.
Operating as if we're gonna adopt this and everybody's. Property is going to get raised to the ground and then rebuilt, like, I just don't.
Isn't mixed use though mean you've got to have a business and you can have residential above?
You can, it's not a requirement.
Strictly business.
No.
It it's not a requirement.
It's an option to your point, like, that was one of the whole incentives that we talked about ad nauseam of. Like, if you did that as a business owner, like, we would give you a bonus for that, we would allow you. Some flexibility, like, we would work with you to allow you to have a smaller space that you could afford if you put some living upstairs.
I'm gonna ask a stupid question, Madison, Old Town Commercial Zone District, that's currently what you're showing me on the thing? Or that's currently just a hundred block?
No, Old Town Commercial Zone District is the saloon, the YMCA and the.
People were in.
And and it's uh the scarab and the car or the.
Old East Nido.
No, well, it's this is the one hundred block, uh, the scarab and the record store, and then it's uh.
Shop and hop to the car wash.
Shop and hop to the car wash, that's Old Town Commercial. So it's in that area that I'm.
All time.
And and we, and and are we changing Old Town Commercial or?
Old Town Commercial is being subsumed into Mixed Use one.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Both sides of Main Street.
Are gonna be mixed.
Are gonna be M U one.
That's what's being proposed.
All right, moving on. Come on.
Be- before we on, move on from M U one, just quickly, one of the the changes that. Is, I I think somewhat substantial, uh, the Old Town Commercial Zone District right now has the minimum front. It has a zero foot minimum front setback, um, in in. I I think part of, in some places, that's encouraged to bring buildings right up to a sidewalk.
I can't hear you, hold on a minute.
Sorry, other people are talking.
Just back off like two sentences, two sentences.
Okay, Matt, go again about the front setback.
Yeah, so the front setback for cur- the Old Town Commercial right now is is a zero foot setback, so you could build your building right up to the sidewalk and. Places that are trying, sort of pedestrian oriented areas encourage that sort of thing to to create a. A better environment for pedestrians, that the consolidation into the M U one zone district would increase that. To a ten foot front yard setback, and and the reason for that is, I, my understanding is there's some icing issues. Along Main Street with buildings being right up to the sidewalk, so. The idea is to to push those buildings back and maybe get some sunlight, or at least have a place to store some snow. If you're shoveling snow off of a sidewalk and things like that, uh, but it is, I mean, it's a substantial change from zero to ten feet. Um, but I wanted to note that, I don't know if there's any comments, but.
I like to, I like the ten V map, for the reason being is, is it'd be great if we had big fat sidewalks, but right now we have. New sidewalks that are super small that you can barely pass somebody on or.
Correct.
Or bike pass somebody on, or if there's a handicap person in there, you know, you gotta just stop and be polite and let them go. And so I I would agree with.
I'm confused though, Matt, Old Town Character area, Commercial Zones. Does that include the one hundred block?
No, that is a complete separate zone district.
Okay, no one hundred.
I'm okay with that, it's everybody else's thing.
I think it should, I think those sidewalks need to be improved for ADUs. I think they need to be improved for people walking up and down the street with baby carriages or people in. Special needs, bicycles, or all that kind of thing, I mean, that's our problems with that all the time.
It just gives people the option, they might wanna put tables out, but it still gives them the option to give a little more space to be more inviting to the public.
And and to clarify, a setback is still private property, it's not.
That's what I was saying, no, that's what I, that's what I, I, that's what I was saying, they can put tables out there, they could do it, they can put multiple tables out there. But if you can put a couple of tables out there, it's probably a little bit more inviting to.
But does that come in with D R B?
To.
You could say, I want you to put a ten foot set uh sidewalk.
For example.
Oh, you can't.
For example, four fifty five main sidewalks on private property, okay, four fifty five main sidewalks on private property.
Yep.
Technically, I don't, they would get spanked if they blocked the sidewalk and put tables out there.
Yep.
And it's on private property, so what he's saying is is correct. Adding a ten foot setback from the property line and not from your pin would give more space. And almost everybody except the car wash, the shop and hop, the sidewalks, not under property. But that's just the way it goes.
But just know that because it's an increase from what is currently allowed there. Uh, which again, we're proposing it, we're supportive of it, it's just going to create nonconformities. For those six or seven lots it applies to, because obviously the scarab and the comic book store and the car wash and. All of those are right up against the sidewalk, they will not conform to the ten foot front setback, so that's just a.
And it's also, playing devil's advocate, as a business owner. If you bought that, a piece of property in that zone, wanted to open a new business, instead of being able to put it up. Where you can put it now, which is right in your property line, you gotta put it five feet or ten feet back, so you're losing five hundred square feet of retail space.
That I think.
That you could have, and you're being, it works great if you're gonna build a residential home, which you're allowed to do by right. But you're not, but you have to have, your house is gonna sit ten feet off the road, as it should, like your old shop did, more than that even, but. It's forcing that, but but as a business owner, you're now losing five hundred, five hundred square.
Four fifty five is currently five foot back, so you wanna change it from ten to five?
No.
No, from zero to ten.
We're going to ten, I'm just, I'm just stating it out loud, that it's taking away retail space.
So I think we.
Helping.
I think we need.
Residential space, it's discouraging commercial businesses, and it's probably promoting residential homes.
I don't know, Main Street eventually if it turns into some businesses, I think that. With this setback in the lot coverage, I think they could still make something feasibly work, because there's a lot of coverage available there.
First of all, my store was not more than probably ten feet, because according to Marka. The fence and a couple of feet inside of the fence are actually not part of that property, now, I've never had it.
See that right away?
Yeah. With the sidewalk, so that the, here is the sidewalk, here is the fence, and she said the property line was within it. Now, I don't know, I've never.
The fence was on C dot probably.
According to measurement on G I S, your, front of your store is eighteen point eight feet away from the property line.
So it isn't what she told me that.
Yeah, so that that means you're.
I still can't believe that.
Thank God, I got a final clap.
It doesn't seem like it's eighteen feet.
But also for the record, Matt, this would be the only, let's just for the sake of argument, saying that R one loses the battle. And goes back to five thousand square foot lot minimums. This would become the only zone in town where you could own a twenty five hundred square foot lot and build a house up.
Um, yeah, M U two, and um, I understand, I don't think single family homes are are used by right, but. M U two has a minimum of twenty five hundred square feet, and um, so it would be M U one and M U two are the. I I think, well, a- as far as new zone districts go, I don't know about existing, like, the hundred blocks, but.
Yeah, but you can build a house on the one hundred block.
Yeah, the new zone district.
House as used by right in M U one.
That's what it says, single family residential dwelling.
And says.
Uh, so, yeah, my my point was, I think, M U one and M U two are the only zone districts with a minimum lot size of twenty five hundred square feet.
Oh, no, this is no.
But it's not a use by right in M U two.
A single family home, no, it's not.
But it it is in M U one.
We're gonna have to put that back up for M U two.
Okay, I'm gonna do that.
But let's figure out this ten foot thing, we have, have we come?
I'm yeah, I'm I'm in favor.
I I'm in favor of it.
I'm in favor of it, okay.
What would you rather see? What would you rather see Eric?
I'd like to see where commercials, so.
No, I got it, I think we could.
I don't wanna restrict commercial.
But it's a commercial business with the front yard, you can incorporate that into your business.
Taking so much chairs and seats out there.
Chairs and seats and merchandise and sale merchandise and people would come and sit under the tree and eat their lunch from the market. It it doesn't. No, we didn't, I, when I had a bench out there, and when I had a bench, I, but you know what, the best thing for me was having a bench in front of my store. Keep it clean, and the women who wanted to shop spent their time in the men sat on the bench and they would take each other. And they kept them away from the women and making them pull them out.
It allowed them to spend more money.
Yes.
You'd be surprised, Eric, if uh the variables on Main Street, if you walked around and. Fi- and figured out exactly where those property lines were, you'd be like, yeah. Like for example, the building next to the car wash, if it, if if they actually built, covered the sidewalk, which technically is their legal right. It wouldn't go over well. Cause there would be no sidewalk.
It's like the little ice cream store you set up.
That place I wish was, that was the best ice cream, it was so good, that was awesome.
That was before me.
Come back.
No, that was before me.
Oh my god, Madison.
Cause the sidewalk is probably um C D O's.
And I hate that building, cause all it is is cement.
The sidewalk in that area is.
One little patch of trees on the backside of it.
What property were you talking about?
Main Street has.
Oh, that one, oh, I like that building actually.
There's no green around it.
There's not.
If you add a green to it, I'd probably love it.
But it is a true mixed use building.
But I don't like all cement, to me that is just, you know, my phrase.
Even the height of it is.
Paint paradise and put up a parking lot.
It's well done.
It is well done, I think that was, since that's commercial at that point, I think we still allow thirty-two feet. So they were able to blow up a little bit, and yeah, I like the scale of that.
I like where the radio station was in there. When Zibby's was in there.
Yeah, Zibby's.
But there was no place to.
Too bad, too bad she didn't eat the money, cause that stuff was.
It was good ice cream.
It was awesome, it was right across the street from my house, the kids ain't had it, my kids had it.
That was very, that would be very dangerous for me.
My kids ran there all the time.
She custom made.
Blue light art.
Everything all day, it was all special flavors. Oh my god, peanut butter.
Sounds good.
Melissa Greenhour was in there.
Yeah, she was.
But part of that is cause, not because of the size of the building, but because the back part of those spaces was parking lots, wasn't it? Garages.
Yeah.
That's why, yeah.
Alright Madison, put, put MU two up there.
Okay.
Alright, MU two.
Let's, let's see the map. I gotta get close.
MU two is hmm South Town Commercial mostly.
Is that Jeff?
No, that's Sibley.
Yeah, Sibley Plumbing.
Oh, Sibley Down Sort of to Frank's all that?
Around Sibley.
Around Sibley.
Oh, Sip, just that side of the street?
No, both sides of the street, it's the salmon color.
Oh, it goes down to Frank's house?
By.
To whose house?
Uh not quite.
Frank Lorini's old house?
Yeah. Uh uh no.
No, Frank Lorini is in like the nine hundred block, I thought.
Frank's in the.
Or actually the eight hundred.
Frank's not there anymore.
Is Battle Mountain Trading in there?
Here, I think.
What's this, isn't he here?
This is, this is the Martin Creek.
Battle Mountain Trading.
Frank's right next.
It's where that car places now, that old garage spot.
Right, I'm trying to find it, I don't remember where it is on the map.
Yeah, that's Frank's.
So he is, he is in there.
Frank's to you, sorta.
This is all MU two, right?
The salmon color, yeah.
Yeah, that's Frank's in there.
Frank's house and the new owners Frank's house, what's this, oh, that's the gas station lot?
That's.
Yep, that's Lucero's.
Oh, where's the Battle Mountain Trading?
Right here.
Is that in there too?
Yes.
So Lucero's is now, what's it called?
MU two.
MU two.
I got the square footage for that?
It's, it's currently mixed use.
Yeah.
It's currently commercial.
It used, it, yeah, I mean, I don't even know.
I drove by there today, so I was getting my haircut at Wally's and I looked over there and I was like, the hell is that lot? Doesn't even look the same.
Yes, when they tore down the the.
The building, it looks like a pretty good lot right there.
It's over seventy-five hundred square feet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's nice flat lot, I don't think, once you start digging, you don't know what you're gonna hit, but. That's okay.
That's not to twenty-five.
And what, and that's, and alright.
Why is that saying twenty-five hundred square feet also?
But the owners have told us that they wanna do a couple of two to three dwelling units, so.
Minimum lot size.
Couple of two to, like two triplexes?
No, I I I changed my wording, so they just, they wanna do two to three dwelling units.
So the minimum lot sizes are seventy-five hundred square feet, most of those places have it?
Yeah, that's the current uh minimum lot size for South Town um Commercial, so yes.
I think it's good, it gives, you know, when Jeff, when Jeff builds all his buildings, you know, people gotta eat. It's a long walk.
It would be great to have more commercial down in that end of town.
It'd be fun to have Battle Mountain Trading Post, the old building cleaned up inside and done to a funky restaurant. On real life, like, when, what was uh Gusto's before Chili Willy's?
Chili Willy's.
Something fun like that.
Oh, Michael, I missed a spot on the map, the Cross Creek Mixed Use, those Dean Master big building is.
Yeah, yeah.
That is also MU two.
That makes sense.
Now, what is being proposed? Is is a pretty drastic change to your point, where currently the the lot minimums are going from ten thousand square feet.
Right.
And seventy-five hundred square feet down to twenty-five hundred, so you'll be able. You'll be able to do a much smaller business, but I think that is what we've been trying to push for in this town is to promote. More new business, and if the lot minimum is ten thousand square feet, forget it.
We just need parking, your green costco, there's no, there's no, not really on street parking down that end of town, so you need parking. You need parking to do business anyway.
Yeah, you're gonna have to figure that out.
I love Sage's old shop.
Yeah.
You know, but the only reason I couldn't go there is because.
There's no parking.
I needed to get something quick and go, and I couldn't go park down return table.
Trust me, to your point, Eric, when Terry and I back then went Sage was selling her restaurant, we had thought very seriously about. Trying to do it, cause she grew up in Vermont, and everywhere in Vermont, you have a general store.
Yeah, general store.
And you get cheese, and you get meat, and you get, you get all the best stuff.
Village Market almost.
Exactly, but but on a smaller scale and.
When you have markets, it's.
We were gonna go to a general store, and you get Uggs and like, we thought with the traffic coming through from Mudville, like, that would have been amazing.
It was all shoes pharmacy.
Yeah, exactly.
That needs to be like ten minute park.
Clark's Market.
I'm harsh on parking.
So.
We're not talking about parking.
I'm okay with the setbacks, the ten foot front, every year. Five yard, five side yard, I'm okay with the twenty-eight foot height, I'm okay with the lot and impervious coverages. As it's presented, I'm, I I think I'm okay with everything, other than again, the limited review stuff is like. You can put in a drive-through, you can put in like manufacturing, you can put in a bed and breakfast, all of those things should be, in my opinion.
Where's the South Town Residential unit, area?
I.
South Town Residential is where I live.
No, you're in Cross Creek.
Cross Creek.
South Town.
Is.
So we pulled in. Put the map back up. In fact, I'm gonna put, hmm, stop.
I think it's.
I I do agree with what Jeff's saying as far as limited review goes, because, you know, over the next twenty or thirty. We'll just be generous, over the next twenty or thirty years, yeah, the stamp is gonna change your op- the opinions of. What works and what doesn't, the purpose of us take, doing a new code was the, was to take the. You know, to make it more clear and to take any interpretations sorta out of it. So whether it goes to council or planning its own, what do you think, Jeff?
Yeah.
So this is the existing zoning map, everything that's yellow is South Town Residential, so capture that in your mind. I'm gonna scroll down to the proposed zoning map. Everything's salmon, so you can see that there was yellow right there.
It's the same, it's, it's filled Frank Medina, simply plumbing, the Trading Post. Barber shop.
Weston.
Frank's, it's, it's all the way, all the way to the bone yard almost.
Right, we just build in from the commercial lot of the Luceros. Down to the commercial portion of the Sibley lot, we made that all mixed use too, when it was previously residential.
But Luceros, is that currently mixed use?
No, it's currently commercial.
It's currently commercial, and we're changing it to residential?
No, we changed it into mixed use.
Mixes two.
You can do some residential if you have some.
Well, but she's talking about a couple, two, three buildings there, just housing, which is what's happened to us, because. We've allowed housing to go in and what is our commercial zones.
Correct.
Over the years, so we lost the commercial.
Correct.
And that's what's gonna happen with Luceros again.
And that's been one of like. Mayor Vides was one of the proponents of bringing more commercial back into that end of town and not allowing those. He he said in years ago meetings.
Wasn't he on those conditions?
I don't know, but he he was the one that said like, we're loo- we're losing our commercial. At that end of town to allow these homes to.
Oh, definitely, definitely.
Well, that's like the new zone district, technically if they have it there now, great, but if they wanna build something new, they have to build something that. Basically, it doesn't say single family homes.
It does not.
It does not.
So that's better for us to build commercial.
Correct. If you wanna have residential, you gotta have.
To get our commercial, more commercial growth in town, because. Whether we like it or whatever, even with what we currently have on the books. People need to eat. And it'd be nice to have something down that end too.
In and out of it.
I think you can get into places down there better than you can get in down here on the hundred block.
Hundred percent.
For sure. Alright, woo-hoo, mixed use three, man.
And the longest sub. Yay, Michael.
Okay, we're.
Oh, the best thing is we're on mixed use three, then we get to go home.
Waiting your entire turn. To have this discussion.
Well, I know. For one thing.
Michael, I would thought it started this into the table.
How, how, how convenient.
Go for it.
Uh Madison verified something for me, uh I did see. Of course, you know, that, you know, since we're referring to people's comments. And we're on mixed use three.
Yep.
There's substantial amount of comments that are opposed to mixed use three from five twelve to five sixty-four. Substantial, like.
I didn't argue with that.
Three pages of comments there.
The the three pages of comments doesn't apply just to that. I I promise.
And then in regards to uh. My property to Amanda's property changing to mixed use three, going down for mixed use. I don't know how many comments you got from actual people that live on that street. But I can't believe that you got many, instead of me just complaining, that that they. Want to not, do not wanna be mixed use three, wanna go to residential, because I I got half the block. For sure that that doesn't wanna go to strictly residential. People that own the properties, and I saw somebody dated owns two of them. So that being said, Madison.
Okay.
That being said. Since it's late, Madison, no, no.
I am keeping y'all here till we get through this.
No, that being, that being said, uh considering. Not, not having, not, not talking about five twelve to five sixty-four. But talking about the existing mixed use, that's currently mixed use, that has always been mixed use. Changing to mixed use three. The technically, we have less uses, but. Um, I'll be okay with it, Madison.
I'm so happy, Michael.
You know, you might have to scratch five twelve to five sixty-four, but.
Yeah, well, just to be fully transparent, like obviously staff is not, has not proposed any changes between open houses and this. But based on the volume of comments of the four hundred block of Pine Street, as well as the multiple comments we received about the five hundred block of Main Street. We are likely going to be proposing those changed either R one or R two, um and so that really does leave. Get back to the map. Through this whole long time.
It leaves, it leaves me to Amanda. Changing from regular mixed use to mixed use three.
It leaves you to Amanda and then it leaves the five hundred block all the way down to the beginning of the seven hundred block on the west side of Highway twenty-four.
Which is, which is quite interesting, but I don't care about that side of the street, no.
I'm aware, Michael.
I'm just kidding, I try to take, I try, I try to take care, Madison, you know.
Those people I used to complain about.
You know who cleans the whole four hundred block?
I wanna know, it's you.
I, you know who, know who sweeps the streets, you know, I.
I didn't know about that.
Who pressure washes the road, for god's sakes.
Why are you pressure washing the road, Mike?
I have.
They can't stand that, I mean, the way it is.
I like things clean, Madison, I like things clean, I don't, the, because if stuff builds up, then we need new roads. And if you don't clean them, then they wear out faster. Maintenance, Madison, it's all about maintenance.
And it also includes Charles O'Bry's lot.
Yeah, we, his was always, the large mat used to be there.
Yeah, it's currently zoned, Old Town Commercial.
In the middle of nowhere.
In the middle of nowhere.
There's not even businesses on Main there, are there?
If Charles does.
Five hundred block.
No.
Not that I'm aware of.
But from what he's talking about wanting to do when he retires, it's a different situation, so then how would you, would you have to rezone it? Or could you just do that there?
No, I think Charles would.
You can do mixed use, or I'm not, sorry, not mixed use, multifamily.
Who are you talking about?
Charles O'Bry's lot.
Charles O'Bry's lot, the three D place.
He can do multifamily, it might not be the size that he wants it to be, but he roughly, what he wants to do is allowed by his arm.
I, yeah, I think, I think that what Charles wants to do definitely fits into the mixed use three.
Are you gonna go then?
No, that, that's the one, I mean, I, I know these comments from the four hundred block, I was rereading some of Pine. And I knew some of them from the five hundred, cause I went to all these meetings and I heard everybody, and I also heard people on the street talking, so. Um, but Charles O'Bry is the one thing, and Charles has not only talked to me, oh, months ago, maybe even a half a year ago. As to what he was thinking of doing when he retired, and then he came to the meeting and was talking. Um, and the issue there is it's owned commercial in the middle of nowhere, but. If he's allowed to put up residential into a commercial area, then it doesn't affect anything.
I think he wants to accomplish both, he's currently commercial.
To that point though, then, what's being proposed? And how it would affect him if this took effect. The minimum lot size is, is doubling. Which is a pretty dramatic increase, it's, it's the ob- it's, it's, it's going the opposite direction of. And you know, what MU two was, and it's saying, okay, for you to have a business in this new zone. You're gonna have to have a five thousand square foot lot, you can't have a twenty-five hundred.
I think he's got five thousand, yeah.
And it's also increasing the setbacks from.
Oh, because it's commercial and he's owned commercial.
Correct, so that, I mean, for a business owner. It, it doubles the size of the let, of the lot that you need to have to do a business, and it also adds. It takes your front setback from zero to ten feet, so.
Doesn't seem very restrictive on the businesses that are in London, just family, I mean, what businesses are allowed?
Not many, art gallery, um.
Gallery.
Offices, uh schools, though that's probably gonna come out with the potentially moving. Four hundred block to, yeah, we'll probably put it in Civic, um and then the conditional use of our. Clotmat.
What did she say, is that what's coming out?
The four hundred block of Pine Street, it's likely gonna be turned to uh R one for the majority of it.
So that would be my map, I guess, that's, that's one of my questions, is that the lot size doubling. Lot minimum for a commercial, in specifically, in what is the, the current zoning for Old Town Commercial. Is, is doubling, and then it's changing from. Is, is doubling and then it's changing from. Zero to ten feet on the setbacks and it's also dropping your. Lot coverage and impervious from eighty, eighty and ninety, which is normally what commercial has been, down to fifty to sixty. So it seems like the intent. On paper seems like it's trying to weed out businesses in that part of town.
It's certainly been considered as a, we've, we've considered it as a transition zone. It's, it's the least intensive of the mixed use zone districts, um, it's right up next to residential, though that can't say much, everything's right up against that residential. And unfortunately, Charles is, and I'm not arguing one way or the other, I'm just trying to.
No, and I don't really have a strong opinion one way or the other, I'm just kinda stating the fact.
I believe that Charles is the only lot that is Old Town Commercial, so his is literally the only lot being affected. By this increase.
He's got like a ten thousand square foot lot, doesn't he?
No, I bet he has a ton of water since it was a lawn to that.
Bet he does too.
I'm not, I'm not saying that, you know, you're not pointing out a very valid, hey, this is taking away, I'm just explaining.
Yeah, and again, I don't have a real strong opinion about it, I'm just kinda stating that as I just.
I would, I would bet Matt, I would bet Jeff that, uh. Charles is probably pretty aware.
He is, man.
Once they propose his property.
Long conversation.
And I'm sure he's unheavement, he's, he's sitting right there.
He's not a fan of it.
He's not a fan, yeah.
Is that what she said?
Yeah. Well, because it, it probably lowers his value.
Well, it lowers the building height from thirty-five feet to twenty-eight feet, which is massive. It lowers the allowable impervious coverage and building coverage a lot and increases setbacks. So if he wants to put, you know, three units is what the example he gave us. Obviously, he'd need, in order to meet all of the parking requirements, he'd need to do tuck in under and so that's the first floor wasted there. And so he would directly need to do two stories on top of that to make any kind of unit work. And so he needs the height.
Flat roofs. And he needs the impervious for the park.
And he definitely needs the impervious for the parking.
Flat roofs. I could help him with that.
Most expensive cut.
I could help him, yeah.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't love. That, how that, how this part of it affects the commercial part of it, but I also understand that the majority of this zone is. Has no businesses in it, so I, I guess it's kinda weird, like. All the property that's in this proposed zone doesn't have businesses and the zoning is being written to restrict businesses. So why, why make it a mixed use zone, why not just?
Make it residential.
Make it residential.
Hey, what are you talking about? Talking about my side of the road?
No, no, well.
Are you talking about Charles, are you talking about Charles?
Talking about.
It affects you. But it seems like it, that's, I, I have a feeling that that would be the result of this selling. Would be, it would just end up being less businesses and more residences.
There's not really any businesses there now.
Right.
So I don't know that we'd actually see a change.
Yeah, like, like Andy said to me today, Andy Baldwin, it has. Three properties over there. She said, and she's told me this years ago, you know, even, you know, before any of this started. When it's being discussed, she said, listen, everything's the way it is right now. And if I die in forty years, I don't want my property, it's already being zoned, down zoned. It's already being zoned down, she says, but who knows, maybe in thirty or forty years, this town is, is booming and. This going from regular mixed use one to going to mixed use three. She says, you know, maybe my daughter or something wants to do something different, you know, so I think that technically, you know. All, every, every other area, you know, besides your side setbacks. Every other area in town is potentially getting some more potential benefits.
Flexibility.
Flexibility, and yeah, that's flexibility, good word, and it. It's only us over there, from me to Amanda and technically, we're all. Lu- losing some flexibility potentially, but it, you know, a lot of it wouldn't really fit anyway at this point. So I think it's a happy compromise to go to mixed use three, if you wanna create another zone for Charles, have at it.
And then that would really be spot zoning, that would be the.
It would be better off to like just call, yeah, just mix, mix, put him in with another zone that are. Would not create his own, really, just put him in his own.
As long as he can't do this with the business, but he's allowed to come in and request becoming residential at that point, isn't he?
I don't know why he would, he loses out on a lot of lot coverage if he comes in and requests being residential now.
Yeah, he would.
And he loses out on seven feet of building height.
Zoning himself.
It's better than having somebody do it.
Right now, he's got good parking and he's got that row of trees which kinda protect him from.
He doesn't want any of this change, he wants to stay restricted, so bad.
I mean, yes, anybody could ever come in and apply for a different zoning.
Yeah.
Like that, that's process.
Certainly he could.
But can you, can you be exempt, can you request an exemption from zoning?
No, that's just a variance, but you can't request a variance from a use.
I mean, technically, you're changing, Jeff, technically, you're changing Matt Shear's house all the way down. To MU three over there, so. Technically, you're making Charles sort of match the whole front.
But Matt Shear is already in a mixed use zone, he's already zoned mixed use.
Zoned commercial.
He's zoned a hundred percent commercial?
I think so, he was.
No, Matt Shear is not zoned commercial, he's zoned residential.
Charles sticks out like a lone.
Charles is the only one down there that's zoned commercial.
I almost bought that building, I don't know about that, it was a lawn connect, it wasn't zoned.
I'll put the map back up on the screen.
He's zoned a hundred percent commercial.
Yes.
Yeah.
But it was for a while, currently, yes.
Currently.
But it was not for a while.
So if he changes the mixed use three, he matches the rest of the front block, I, I could understand, trust me, I. I, yeah, I don't even have a comment, I don't, I don't know what you wanna do with Charles.
That's the current.
I, I got another question. Didn't we? In this particular zone, did we not have conversations about? The height back when we were doing.
I didn't even, I didn't think we ever got to building height, did we?
Well, I, I remember a gen- no, but I, no, I remember a general. Discussion about how height bonuses, I, I think it was definitely pertaining more to the hundred block.
Right.
But we, we talked about height bonuses where if you did commercial on the first floor or residential on the second floor, we might give you a bonus. And allow you to go to thirty-two feet.
And you know, that's already in our code, we could just amend it to include other zone districts other than the one hundred block.
This might be one of those spots.
Right.
Where Charles could get a bonus.
Especially if, I don't know, you deed restricted something.
There you go.
Yeah.
Now you're talking. Commercial on the first floor.
No, I mean, because it's zoned commercial right now, it would transfer from downtown to there. That ability.
Well, no, that ability currently is specific to the one hundred block, not Old Town Commercial, so we would need to extend.
Transfer to the whole of Pine Street, it's gonna transfer.
No, it would extend to MU three, like a specific zone district. We couldn't, we couldn't specify it to a lot, that's preferential treatment. No, MU three is Main Street and either we're street now, cause four hundred block of Pine Street is kind of out of it.
Cause I mean, when Charles talked to me, it sounded like he wanted to do a place for him and his wife in the future, an ADU and possibly some other thing that he could rent.
I'd tear the building down.
He's definitely gonna tear it down.
Yeah.
But, you know, um, that's what it sounded like to me, so it was three units.
Three units, yeah.
But not necessarily all of them.
So what, what do we just think about possibility of, of, I mean, it's a super. Hot topic, man, I'm not, I'm not, but, but what are we thinking about? I- if it goes higher, it's Steve restricted, is that what you're saying?
No.
If he deed restricted, then he might be able to get the height.
That's not, that's not something we put in the zone.
That's not good.
It's not.
No.
What I'm talking about is, right now, the twenty-eight foot is the max, which is being proposed for the zone, for, for a max height on your building. I don't understand why we're proposing this twenty-five hundred square foot minimum doubling to five thousand square feet. I don't really understand why we need to do that.
I think all, I think the whole area, uh, well, yes.
Well, that again goes into Old Town Rec- Residential territory, which is.
No, one hundred block to the seven hundred block of Main Street.
Jeff, everybody, I think, I think, I think, I think, I think almost everybody, I don't know about. Over Kelly Tunes, but I think almost everybody in MU three that's being proposed definitely has the five thousand.
I doubt it, I bet there's some in there that don't.
So I, I can provide a little more clarification, um, that. Change is recommended in the community plan, it recommends a, for MU three, a minimum lot size of five thousand square feet. Uh, minimum lot size from multifamily housing, seventy-five hundred square feet, lot coverage of up to sixty percent. And maximum building height of twenty-eight feet, so that, a- and then, um. I, I think that's, so that's where some of those recommendations from the community plan, um, got incorporated here. And, uh, I, I hear the concern.
What are your thoughts, Matt?
That's how great as it relates to a residential lot, it's not great when it gets. Applied to a commercial property.
So, uh, one option could be, um, if you wanted to allow smaller la-. Lot area for a commercial and or mixed use project, you could, we could. We could say that in the code, that minimum lot size for a commercial or mixed use project is twenty-five hundred square feet, if you're doing a purely residential, then it's five thousand.
Yeah, so for a lot, it would be more times than I, I think that would be my recommendation to, for the next conversation. Maybe try to incorporate something like that into.
In the mixed use three, Jeff?
Only for commercial use.
Correct.
Not for residential, if resident, if all of this dimensional standards can stay. What is being proposed for, for strictly residential use, but if someone wants to do a small business. They could have a smaller lot and they could have more impervious coverage and. More of the carve-outs that you should have for.
Which means Charles potentially would have to keep some type of business there, correct?
If he wanted to take advantage, well, he's not really worried about the lot size, he's more worried about the height.
Yeah.
Cause he'll be doing a multifamily building, he's not subdividing it into like three single family homes.
Yeah, I think for, for, especially for anyone that's gonna invest in this town and put a building up with. Commercial on the main floor and they wanna put residential on the second floor, I feel like they should be allowed to go a little taller than your standard twenty-eight foot. Because they're gonna need the height for the, for the residents and they're gonna need the more impervious coverage for their apartment, so. Most businesses in most towns, including this one, and the current code says in all the commercial spots that. You have basically zero setbacks, zero lot lines, you have eighty to ninety percent. Lot coverage and you have ninety percent impervious coverage.
But for this specific MU three zone, talking about Charles, do we wanna reduce the square foot size? For strictly commercial, cause I think that height's gonna be a whole nother topic.
I just think that for, for the next conversation, I'm, I'm recommending to Matt that. He makes some additional carve-out language that we can talk about for MU three that has. Because like, just for instance, MU one. You're, you're twenty-eight feet, you're limited to twenty-eight feet for a residence, but you're allowed thirty-five feet for a commercial building. And I think that MU three should be the same.
But those restrictions on that, well.
I, I just wanna have, I don't wanna have the conversation tonight.
Is that what it says, is that what it says for height in, in MU one?
No, I don't think so.
Yeah, MU, MU one. Twenty-eight feet for residential, thirty-five feet.
Five feet is just for.
Building height, MU one.
Existing is thirty-five, changing to twenty-eight.
No, that's for Old Town Commercial, not Old Town Mixed Use.
It says mixed use one right here.
Yeah, I'm talking, what's being proposed for MU one is to allow thirty-five feet for commercial.
Oh, you want to propose that?
No, that, that is what's in the package, isn't it?
Yes. Wait, wait, MU one?
Here, right here, in the.
That's just the hundred block, right?
That's twenty-eight feet residential, thirty-five feet commercial slash mixed use.
You are right.
Right.
And so I'm saying that that kind of a carve-out.
Right.
Should be like in, in most of it, you know, mixed use.
So what is mixed use? Mixed use one is up to the four hundred block, is that what we talked about earlier?
Yeah, two hundred blocks down to the four hundred block, I think. I'm pulling the map up.
Yeah.
Yeah, two hundred down to the, actually five hundred block, beginning of five hundred block on Main Street.
The church house next to me, down.
Across Bell and Bridge.
That's mixed use one space, let me just, well, that was a nice slide in there, oh, that's thirty-five. But whatever, I, I, I don't, I don't.
It's what you need to do that kind of.
I don't know where the hell you're getting the parking, but go along, Kevin.
Well, again, that's, that's not what we're talking about, we're not, we're not reviewing.
I find it strange that we don't inclu- include that since it's part of the whole picture.
You can't talk about parking for something that's not designed, you can't talk about how, how, how you can design it. And what your lot dimensional standards are, it's up to you as the person that wants to apply for something to prove that you can park and do all your things.
Especially because parking is so very used to use, there's no way.
You don't, you don't restrict parking with zoning.
Parking, parking meters, baby, we love it, we need money, we need money.
Yeah, they're not, they're not money-making machines, not.
I'll drive the car.
I can tell you some stories about.
I'll drive the car around, I'll take you. Fifty bucks a pop, you're overstayed, you stay.
Yeah, but the town doesn't get the money and usually you, I can tell you about Idaho Springs's parking.
Perhaps.
Alright, alright, are, are, are we, are we, are we okay with MU three?
I have, we're, Matt and Scott and I are gonna go look at doing some more specific carve-outs, kind of similar to MU one. In regards to lot size and building height.
For MU three?
For MU three, we're purely commercial versus purely residential.
Great, awesome.
Do, do we include mixed use in that, like for MU one, it's, uh, commercial. And mixed use developments have a, a different allowance in purely residential, is that the direction to look at for MU three?
Pretty, yes.
For mixed use one he's talking about?
No, we're still talking about MU three, just using MU one as an example.
I'm sorry, could you just repeat that, Matt?
Yeah, so.
Go ahead.
So MU one has a taller building height for a commercial development or. A will end a, a mixed use development, it's thirty-five feet, whereas if you're doing a purely residential development, it's twenty-eight feet. Uh, and I just wanted to clarify, um, cause I've heard commercial, we, we wanna have a, maybe a, a greater allowance for commercial development in MU three. I wanted to ask, should that, should mixed use projects also receive that, that bump in building height, maybe a smaller minimum lot size?
If that's what everybody thinks, but I just, I, I, I ju- I just asked.
You want a twenty-five foot lot.
Let me finish, let me finish, no, because it's not really. Possi- I want limited use to come to us in council, because that's where a lot of these uses apply. The height doesn't really make much of a difference in regards to the majority of it.
Height would be reviewed at DRB, not limited use, limited use just deals with the use, not the building height.
So anything with building height changes over twenty-eight has to come to us, is that?
Any developments that you are building on a property has to come to you.
But are we gonna put the code that it's allowed?
That's what is being.
And that's what I'm saying is that I wa- I would like to have the discussion for any of these mixed use zones that. If you're gonna have a building that is a commercial building, that's not a strictly residential building. Then there should be, in theory, a carve-out for some additional, there, and there already is now in all, in our, in our code now.
When are this to stop?
No, only on the first hundred block, is it a Jeff? Jeff, it's only the hundred block, Jeff.
Well, there's, there's that area. Well, there's, there's that area there where there's stairs below.
Yeah, it's probably considered, what's the height? This is probably a four story building.
Jeff, right, right now, though, the only thing that we allowed more than twenty eight is in the one hundred block. I think it's a big stretch.
And Old Town Commercial.
And Old Town Commercial.
Just like six lots, that goes up to thirty five.
Just like six lots, I think it's a big jump. There's probably a zillion opinions on whether we wanna make that change.
Well, for instance, like we just talked about, how how tall do you think Zivvy's was? How how tall is that building?
I think thirty two.
I would have to say it's thirty two.
It's all, it's every bit thirty two.
I did the flat roof something, because scales didn't count.
But that's the kind of building I'm talking about, like that's the kind of, you you have to have some allowance to be able to do.
If you wanna allow it, I think allowing it in MU one is is one thing, I think it's a big stretch to push it on MU three.
It it may be, but I just, I don't wanna have the talk necessarily tonight, but I wanna have the talk that there should be some provision for it. Otherwise, if, uh, all I'm pushing for is for you to have a business and if you're trying to. Generate people to come to this town and start businesses, we've been through this before. It's so expensive to build a building that doesn't have some residence, residential component above it. Or else you can't pay for the building, it's gonna sit there vacant.
I I agree.
Why build a building, no one's gonna, no one's gonna spend a dime in this town, building, commercial building, hoping that that they're not gonna be sucking wind on the rent.
I I agree with, I agree with you, I agree.
Residential pays for the building.
I I I agree with, I I agree with that point, but I, I just want to. Of course, I wanna clarify that what the, we're all in agreement with MU three being where it's located. And any discussions ongoing over twenty eight feet, whether it's an MU one, MU two or MU three. Are going to happen in a different meeting just on the height itself.
If that's the direction, I mean, those are on the posters tonight. The all dimensional limitations are on the posters now. So theoretically, unless we have comments to change them or discuss them later. Then we're going to assume that it's good.
What do we add at MU three right now?
And MU three is being proposed to be twenty eight feet.
We're gonna go with that, it's good with a future meeting to discuss any potential. Raising of heights. For residential and commercial. In in what districts it might be beneficial in, whether it's be- only beneficial in MU one. Or e- beneficial in MU one and MU two, because there's probably gonna be. Some, oh, some more opposition in MU three. So I think that we should roll with what we got, but definitely respect Jeff's request to to put. Height discussions, because we know that everybody's been wanting height discussion, not, well. Not everybody, but we know that there's height discussions that have been thrown around and we've gone back and forth and we fought pretty hard to keep it at twenty eight. Getting the one hundred block to thirty five was a hell of a long test. So let's roll with this now, but respect. Jeff wanting to have a discussion, maybe when we have a joint meeting with council or. At some other point in regards to potential, so that way we can move through this in regards increasing potential height. In a different meeting in a different format. You okay with that? All right, all in agreement, Matt, see you later. Thank you.
That's it for MU three?
You're off the clock. You're off the clock, Matt.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Yeah, I I'm only gonna get about four hours sleep tonight, so.
That's what I've been living on all week.
I'm not gonna be at the next meeting, so we have to get to this.
Planning Department update, I provided a copy of an approval letter granting an extension to DRV. Um, approval and also a copy of the request letter. So.
On what?
So the, so one of the Silver Star, uh, one of the Minter North Houses got approved. Uh, final approval was August seventh of last year, so theoretically their approval expires August seventh of this year unless they request and are granted an extension. Um, because they haven't executed a building permit yet, however, they have told us they will be applying for the building permit within the next thirty days. And however long it takes for that to get executed, we'll then kind of make it all valid.
You should get one in Spence too, just so he's covered.
I've told him the deadlines that he needs to apply and be granted an extension for. Because he's coming up on that for the variance and the DRV. But not the conditional use permit, I don't think, coincidentally, I think that one's actually good for three years.
Variance has a, has time bound?
You have to act on any variance within a year.
Oh, I thought I asked a question and said it was good forever.
Nope, it's good for a year unless you get, uh, asked and granted an extension, however, variance I believe have to be granted an extension by council, not administratively.
Well, but there, y- you know.
But if you sold the building, the variance goes with it.
Well, if you have executed the project, the variance is in perpetuity.
That makes sense.
If you have not pulled the trigger on the building permit, then it dies.
If you, if you change your mind and it doesn't get built, well, it can't go for in perpetuity.
You have a year plus whatever extension you were granted by the council to act on it.
Well, that that makes sense, I must have misunderstood. All right, good, paying attention, Madison.
I try.
All right.
Okay, we have the August sixth meeting, I am polling people to see if y'all can start at four instead of four thirty, given the massive amount of information we have to get through.
Weekday of the week, it's this Wednesday? Then do we have a meeting the following week?
Yes, cause you have planning commission.
And I don't think, I, I know I'm not gonna.
What, where are you going?
Family time, well, I think Amanda told you as well.
She will be able to attend virtually, she will be on a business trip, though.
Is it a work session or is it a real public?
The work session.
So public not allowed to come?
Yes, they can come, they just won't be able to.
They can't talk.
But is that the me- is that the joint meeting with council?
Yes, it's August sixth. And then, so it's work session, however, council is not allowed to give anybody any formal direction within work session. So it will also be on discussion direction later on in the meeting after all the business items, however, typically. That same night, however, typically the work set, after the work session is done, y'all obviously are free to move to the. Uh, the audience or go home, but it it does not reconvene into a joint session at that time. They certainly can, they don't have to take it under discussion direction, public comments only required during public hearings. But in the efforts of transparency, public comments typically allowed under any agenda item.
Don't they start their meetings just like we do with like a general like public comment, they can say anything, it's not on the agenda?
Absolutely.
And they don't have that. Cause they're gonna have a regular meeting.
Yes, right after the work session.
Yeah, I, I, we had that other joint meeting.
I know, I feel this one might be a little longer.
Yes, which is why we're, I'm polling people to see if they can make four instead of three.
As long as I'm getting fed.
Oh, is it? Okay, which means I'm hearing you're free.
I apologize, but I have a rule, if my wife's paying for vacation, I'm gone.
That is a decent rule, Michael.
You know, and and. I apologize.
You're good, just so that I, y'all have a heads up, I will be sending out likely a survey. Uh, with questions in order to try and get more concrete answer before, just like the last work session we did. I will be sending that out Monday, so even if you're not attending, I do request that you take the survey.
Oh, no, I can definitely, I can de- I, because I don't fly till like Tuesday morning, so I can definitely take the survey.
As long as you get it done by before Wednesday, the Wednesday of the work session, you get back that Sunday.
She'll be in the meeting.
She'll be at the meeting, you can have Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, take the survey.
No, that's great, because I'd like to definitely do that. I don't, maybe, you can, can you email it to me in a form that I can try to open it to where I could type in it? Cause you'll never read my writing, I don't know how.
No, it should just, uh, like we haven't finalized it, obviously, we've just talked about it today, um, among the the team. But it will likely be multiple choice, um, where you select, hey, I would like to see X, Y, or Z. So it's, it's an online format, you shouldn't have to type in anything, you shouldn't have to write in anything, you will get a paper copy. And so I shouldn't have to read your handwriting, um, it's just a survey monkey, survey like we did last time.
No, that'd be great, that'd be great, because I definitely, I def- you know. I mean, why do you pick these when you know I'm gone, I told you last, last meeting, two meetings ago, I wasn't gonna be here, oh, perfect.
I don't, no, 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 if I was able to pick when we discussed things, I would have picked MU three to be when you were gotten last.
I would have told my wife I'd have to meet her there. I love it, I love it. That would have been her answer for sure. Uh, it's all right, I'm used to it.
But you won't be here for the thirteenth Planning Commission meeting, is that what I'm also hearing?
Hell are we talking about now?
Provide meeting with council on council's meeting day, then we have a meeting the thirteenth, will you be here for that?
Maybe that's where I get screwed up, no.
So you won't be for either.
Ten days or so. But I didn't know we were having a meeting on ca- I just looked at the schedule and I said, okay, the second meeting in a month. That's the only one I'm gonna miss.
But we're also having a meeting the week before because we're having a meeting with council.
Yeah, see, I, maybe if I was here at the last meeting, I would understood that.
The second meeting in the month is the twenty seven, the first meeting of the month for planning and zoning is the thirteenth.
Yes, that's the one that I knew I was gonna miss, but when you were just explaining it to me, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't pay attention to the date.
No worries, that was on the last agenda, I forgot to include it on this agenda, so if you're gone the sixth, perfectly fine, if you are here the sixth, even better.
I'm gone, I'm gone the fourth.
Okay, so you're gone.
Eight, when's the first day of school, Eric? We come back the night before.
The eighteenth is the first day of school, right?
I don't know the answer, no, I'm.
Think, I think Amanda said it's the eighteenth.
Yeah, I think it's Monday, we come back, we come back like Sunday night.
Okay, so yes, just take the survey, I will email it to you when it's done.
Come on, man.
When can I make the motion?
Make the motion.
Does anybody have any planning question comments? Please say no.
I don't wanna be scolded for missing two meetings, though.
You won't be scolded, she's the chair, she's the only one who would.
She's gonna scold me for sure. You should have seen the eye she gave you, I could see it with my one eye, it was like.
All you do is miss out on the pay for those meetings.
Did we get his money?
I think Jay might like start twitching his eye.
You can use my money for dinner.
Okay, planning question comments?
I'm, I, there was something I have, but I can't. I mean, I thought of it last night at home.
See the things I think about it.
There was already a second, that's the one we're.